Good evening. Welcome to the Iskwa City Council October 28th Council Budget Study Session. We are now in the second evening of Budget, 2020 Budget Deliberations. What I would like to do this evening, the administration has been kind enough to make an attempt to distill what they heard from the council last week into a revised budget proposal. I would like to offer Director Goldberg a chance to walk us through that to the extent that she would like to. At that point then, what I would like to do is sort of take the temperature of my fellow council members about whether we want to use that revised budget as a baseline for our further discussions this evening. And if we do, or if we don't, or if we want to go back to the original, or if we want to do something else, from then, we would move on to questions, or additions, or subtractions to whatever our baseline is. I want to thank, there's a couple of folks in the public that are here, awesome, as well as all the city staff that's here with us this evening as well. Director Goldberg.
Good evening. So, on the screen, we have a tally of where we are with the budget based on the feedback that we heard from all of you last Wednesday evening. And then, we took that information and determined what the revised budget gap was, and have before you tonight, a series of proposals that we would offer up to bring the budget back into balance. So, to accommodate the requests that you made last Wednesday, and then return us to a balanced budget. So, what I thought I would do is go through the highlights of this, line by line. I think I can do it fairly quickly. And just to orient everyone to this spreadsheet, we're starting with the mayor's proposed budget, which was $50.2 million. And anything on here that you see as a positive number is something that is helping the bottom line. Anything that is a negative hurts the bottom line, and that applies whether it's a revenue or an expenditure. So, anything that you see as a positive is helping the bottom line. Anything that's a negative is hurting the bottom line. So, the first thing that we added to the mayor's proposed budget are actually two things that we talked about last Wednesday night. And that was the addition of some property tax revenue based on the revised estimates we got from the King County Assessors Office. This is $111,000 to the good. And then, we deducted from that $34,000.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt. I think you've got a question.
Really pardon the interruption, but when you say the bottom line, are you just talking about the general fund? Are you talking about overall?
A general fund.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, so, this is not non-general fund, except to the extent that there are some things that I will talk about where we are leveraging fund balance in other funds, and pulling that into the general fund. But, in all of those cases, there is plenty of fund balance in those funds that we're drawing from. So, this is, this is general fund focused. So, the utility tax that's reflected on line three on, on the spreadsheet that is projected is the amount of utility tax that we are expecting to lose, or will lose, from the direction from the council to not raise the water utility rates above the currently adopted 3.5 percent. So, when we do that, the bottom line becomes 50.3 million, leaving us about 77,000 to the good. So, at the council meeting last week, last Wednesday, we heard from the council, direction on a couple of fronts. First, a desire to reduce the utility tax increase. And, we heard everything from the 3% to 6% range. What this is modeling out is a reduction in the utility tax rate from 6% to 4%. So, that represents a $711,000 hit to the budget. We also heard from the council, a desire to expand the low-income utility tax discount program. And, we provided a description of where we are with that work program item in the materials we distributed to you all on Friday. We would like that to be a work program item that we would report back to all of you early next year.
So, council president, members of the council, we've spent a fair amount of time in the last several days, kind of thinking through this, and we're, we're not quite there. There's a nonprofit that we already work with called Hope Link, which is a contractor for Puget Sound Energy. And so, they run their program. They, Puget Sound Energy has, has partners in different parts of their service area, but Hope Link is the group that manages it for the eastern part of King County. So, that, we kind of started at the point of trying to find someone who already has a program in place, someone that's already going through the process of evaluating income and whatnot. So, we think that that might be a group to look at, and maybe just go to them and say, here are all the things we want to do to help folks. Can you help us come up with a better, more comprehensive way to do that? So, that's kind of our thinking. We don't have anything more worked out with that. But, we thought that if we could find a regional utility that already had a program, which Puget Sound Energy has, that that would be a good starting point. So, that's kind of where our thinking is. And again, as you'll see for several of these items, we're committing to add that to the work plan.
Thank you.
Okay, so, the next item on the list that we heard council expressed an interest in doing last Wednesday is using general fund fund balance to support the citywide services assessment work, noting that that is a one-time program, a one-time use of funds, so could we marry that with the one-time use of fund balance? So, we've got that reflected here as $250,000 positive to the bottom line balancing because we would be drawing on, on fund balance to support that.
Councilmember Winterstein.
Yeah, I, I have a different perspective on how we should be reporting this 250. This is not really a change. I mean, I, I take this assessment to show changes. This isn't a change. It was originally proposed to come from the general fund. It's still coming from the general fund. Now, what we've done in years past is when we've added up expenditures based out of the general fund, we did identify those appropriations that we, or projects or costs that we thought were, were going to be one-time. And we took a look that, and we saw that, and we would look at, are the one-time expenditures, if we're using, if our, if our ending fund balance is going to go down? In other words, our inflow of money is not, our, our outflow of money from the general fund is going to be greater than the money flowing in? Is that difference? Do we have one-time projects that we can say, no, at least we have projects that are equal to, or about that amount? So, it was, there's not really a separate fund for that. It's just whether or not we have one-time projects that we can say, say, hey, yeah, we are using, not for ongoing expenses, but for one-time expenses. I don't really know why this would change the bottom line of the general fund. It doesn't. It's still coming out of the general fund, so.
It is still coming out of the general fund, but it is helping with, with the balancing. So, this is, this is reflecting it from, from a bottom line perspective.
All right. If you'll continue.
Yes, so, the next request was to shift more street operating costs to the real estate excise tax. And, the administration is not recommending making a change in that area because we've got quite a, quite a bit of ongoing costs already on REIT. It is a volatile revenue source, and we don't feel that that would be a prudent thing to do at this time. We also scrubbed the street operating fund to see if there were additional one-time programs being funded by general fund dollars within the street operating. And, we've already identified all of those. So, to do any additional shifts would be shifting of ongoing costs that we just don't feel like would be responsible at this point. We've got about $1 million going for ongoing right now. And just as a point of reference, when the economy collapsed back following the Great Recession, total REIT revenues dropped to about the $1.5 million range. So, to put more ongoing costs on here does, does create a vulnerability for the city. We also heard council last Wednesday express a desire to not pursue in 2020, the work program item that would look at furthering, or further work on consolidating City Hall. So, we, we backed that expenditure out of the general fund. So, again, it's a positive here because it, it helps the bottom line balancing.
Councilmember Walsh.
So, my understanding was we have a fair amount of money in an impact or mitigation fund that needs to be spent within the next few years. So, was the initial proposal that the $50,000 would come out of general fund rather than out of the mitigation fund?
It, it was.
Is there a way that it can be, oh, no, because that has to be toward construction and such, right?
Well, it, it, the mitigation dollars are for capacity building. So, but I think the desire, and I don't want to speak for council members, I think the concern was the project itself, not the funding source, is my understanding.
Is now a good time to talk about this, or should we wait till we go through?
Let's, let's flag it and come back to it as we look to address the questions once the presentation is over.
Okay, council also expressed a desire to restore the community fund to the 2019 levels. So, this would add back just under $70,000 to return that funding to the 2019 levels. Similarly, the city council expressed a desire to restore community center and pool hours to the 2019 operating levels. That comes at an added cost of $25,000. So, that is added back in, in line 18 of the spreadsheet. Council also expressed a desire to lower the gold pass annual fee from the proposed 120 to $50 annually. What we've put forward here is a slight modification to that proposal that would have the gold pass increase to, instead of the 120, to $60 a year, because that translates more cleanly on a per-month basis. And it also allows for a cleaner distribution for a non-residential rate, and allows us to preserve that 20% differential between residential and non-residential rates. So, under this proposal that we're putting forth here, the gold pass would be $60 a year for residents, and $72 a year for non-residents. And, it would represent a $25,000 revenue hit to the general fund.
Councilmember Hunt.
Do we lose more revenue if it's paid monthly because we're having to do the credit card fees every month rather than if it were a one-time payment? And if so, I'm just wondering if that's also going to be passed on to people, and what the impact is on the budget? If that's, if there's a difference between doing monthly fee versus one-time?
I'm seeing our parks director shake his head, but maybe.
Jeff Watling, Parks and Recreation Director, sorry, emotional topic, or maybe it's just my cold. Yes, so, in this proposal, we want to give customers the flexibility to either pay annually or monthly. With our Perfect Mind software system, I, depends on how they would pay. I don't know what the merchant fee translates to. We are not planning on passing those merchant fees on this year to customers. It would be a very small number for this cost.
Can I ask, it's a knit, but $50 instead of 120, but it's actually 60 and 72?
Yes, so, the, the way this spreadsheet is set up is that first column is intended to be what we heard the council members ask on the 23rd. And then, columns C and D represent the administration's response to that. So, what we heard from council last week was a desire to lower it to $50. As we were unpacking it and looking at the practicality from an implementation perspective, are coming back and saying, rather than the $50, we would recommend it be $60 per year.
Understood. Thank you. Please proceed.
Okay, so, the next one in this, Jeff's comments may be a good segue into the, to the next line on this list, which is a request to shift merchant fees to customers. And, similar to the low-income utility tax discount program, we would like this to be a work program item because there are complexities with implementing this that we are not able to resolve in time for adoption of the budget. And, some of those complexities include the, we, we're collecting credit card payments through multiple systems. So, you just heard Jeff talk about Perfect Mind. We're also collecting credit cards through TrakIt and other online platforms. And each of them have different mechanisms for how merchant fees are charged. And so, we, we need to take some time to look at our ability to be consistent across all of those platforms. So, we would like to take some more time in early 2020 to work through those issues and report back. And, anything that we're able to integrate, we can integrate it certainly for the 2021 budget. And if council had a desire to do something earlier, we could, we could look at that as well. Similarly, there was a request to develop a low-income discount program for cemetery fees. And, our facilities department is working with Flint Hoffs, the, the organization that is managing our cemetery, to develop that program. Management agreement will be coming to council in early 2020. And as part of that, would like to offer a proposal to the council for how we would offer a low-income discount resident for cemetery fees. There was a request to restore the deferred street repairs and maintenance amounts that you heard Public Works Operations discuss. So, we've added that back in. That's $185,000 in cost. There was a-
Question. This is the balance from the pavement management program?
It's, yes, it's, yes. No, it's not.
So, I don't remember this one.
Brad Heath, Public Works Operations. The $185,000 is in the repairs and maintenance operating budget. It's not the pavement overlay program.
Only, I, I can't connect that with anything that the council requested.
I think that was a request from councilmember Walsh.
Yeah, and perhaps I am remembering wrong. I thought councilmember Walsh's discussion was about the balance in the pavement management program. Stand.
All right, please proceed.
Okay, there was also a request to see if we could work, rework the CIP to shift any programs, or any CIP-funded projects off debt service onto REIT. And, we heard specifically a desire for Central Park Pad 3. So, we've got that reflected. It's a $200,000 project that rather than being funded with debt service, would be funded with REIT. And the debt service, the annual debt service savings to the general fund would be about $6,000, $6,500. And, just by way of context for why this amount is so small, we are anticipating debt financing about $12.5 million worth of projects in 2020, using general fund debt service. Majority of those dollars are for two projects in particular. About $7.6 million for the Signal at Southeast 43rd at Providence Point, and $3 million for the Northwest Semamish Road Connectivity Project. Those projects together are about $11 million. So, represent a bulk of, of the debt financing we've got contemplated for 2020. The total debt service on those projects is about $480,000. And that's because we've got the debt structured as interest only in the first year. So, really, to achieve any level of savings on those debt service costs, you're talking about those two big projects would be the only way to make a really sizable dent in that.
Councilmember Walsh.
So, I found the $185,000 that I had looked at. It's on page 110 of the budget. It is out of the Street Operations Fund, but the Street Operations Fund is funded this year by $372,000 transferred in from the general fund. So, my interpretation of the 185 that I had asked for was to have an additional transfer from the general fund to the street operating fund to make sure that those repairs were completed. So, that's why it maps back to the general fund.
This is what you're asking me?
Yes.
And why it shows up as a 185 parenthetical? Because it would be a net reduction to the ending fund balance of 185,000.
Okay. Council president, before we go further, we're 20-plus minutes in, or about halfway through the spreadsheet. Is everyone comfortable with the level of detail? Would you rather us kind of speed up and you can get into, go into level of detail?
I think you're seeing a general-
Very good, thank you.
-thumbs up. But, thank you for checking.
Okay, we also heard a desire last week by council to complete work on Title 18. This was in the context of some of the discussions around the environmental objectives within the strategic plan. So, that is estimated to cost about $50,000 that we've got added back in here. The next series of items, examination of selling Tibbetts Creek Manor and other surplus properties, is another one that we're recommending as a work program item for 2020. This is not something that we feel like we can have developed in time for the council to adopt the budget. And this is also a topic likely that will spark lots of discussion and policy questions for the council. So, want to take a little more time.
And here's a question right now, councilmember Ray.
Thank you. The work plan item of, of looking at Tibbetts Creek and other surplus properties, is that something where we would do with existing staff? Or is that something where we're going to need some additional funding to help make that happen?
Councilmember, members of the council, I don't know that we have an answer to that question yet. That's why, rather than give you a, a number that's not meaningful, we'd rather come back and talk further about it, or prepare to do.
Okay, so, there was also a request last week that we not designate in the budget the state pass-through money going to Arch. That that was a topic that the council wanted to have a discussion about in the context of, of the Arch Agreement. The state pass-through money does need to be spent on affordable housing, so it's not a balancing item because we need to preserve that expenditure authority. But, did want to acknowledge that we will be reporting back to you in, as separate from the budget, on that topic. There was a request for a breakdown of the Legislative Division budget, and I don't have that breakdown here, but that, we did provide that to you in the materials that we distributed on Friday. There was a request to-
I'm sorry, councilmember Goodman?
Thank you. My voice back, yay. So, I have the breakdown. It's, the total budget, proposed budget is $202,000. $124,600 of that is salaries and benefits, which are, come up, that's come up with, by a salary commission. We don't set those ourselves, and the city doesn't set that. And then, we have operating, general operating expenses of $14,000, oh, sorry, $13,400 for professional services of $5,000, and transfers out of $59,000. The, so, I want to ask about all three of those. What are the general operating expenses for professional services? And the transfers out are for the council's portion of the IT cost allocation, which seems really high compared to the total budget, but that's probably just because it's not a high-paying position. So, that's my question. What the operating expenses professional services are for? And if somebody can explain why the IT costs appears to be high proportionally?
So, is that something we can get information to use separate from this meeting? That's not something that I don't think we have at our fingertips right now?
Sure. The, the IT one, maybe? I'm guessing maybe professional services has to do with, maybe it's legal services that are allocated to the council?
We'll see if we can look it up here.
Okay.
If not, we'll have to get back to you.
Thanks.
All right, there, it looks like there's some conferring in the back row. So, the next item on the list is not offering 1% COLA for non-represented employees. The savings to the general fund, if we were to do this, would be about $72,000. But, the administration is not recommending that we go forward with that proposal, and is making that recommendation from a couple of different perspectives. First, the COLA that we are offering, or that we're recommending this year at 1% is lower than what the city has traditionally offered. The city has traditionally offered a COLA in the 2% to 2.5% range. So, this, this is lower than what we traditionally do. In addition, as part of class comp, the range between the steps would be lower for, starting in 2020 than in past years. So, in the past, the, the range between steps was 5%. Under the class compensation proposal that's before you, that would drop to 3%. So, the city is already, through this budget, asking its employees to shoulder some of the burden of the budget challenges, and is making changes in lowering the long-term growth trajectory, trajectory of, of those salaries. So, for those reasons, the administration feels that it is, it makes sense to continue offering the 1% COLA for non-rep employees. And then, just as a point of reference, this is the general fund impact only because that's what we're looking at across the government. It's about $102,000, including the $71,000 for the general fund. And then, there was a request from council that we look, speaking of class comp, not just at the salaries, but total compensation. And again, this is, we're recommending this being a 2020 work program item, and that we not delay implementation of the salary components of class compensation, that we go forward with that in the 2020 budget. So, that is the, the universe of requests that we heard from the council. When you tally all of those up, and the administration's recommendations on those requests, it puts the general fund out of balance by about $750,000, $759,000. So, then, the next part of this is what- So then the next part of this is what did we do to address that? And the first thing we did is actually make it worse. We, after hearing the council's discussion on the ITS program last week, and City Administrator Bob Kowits had a chance to connect with staff from the Public Works Engineering Department and understanding the council's priority for ITS. And what was offered up in the proposed budget is not funding one of our vacant positions. City Administrator Bob Kowits had concerns that this would jeopardize the city's ability to provide the data that the council is looking for through the ITS program. So is recommending that we add that position back or add funding back for that position. So that's at $184,000. So that takes the $759,000 gap and bumps it up to 943. So now, the next series of things are what we are offering up to close that gap. And the first thing, there's a series of things that we're recommending where we would be transferring more balances from, fund balances in other funds to help support costs within the General Fund. And this first item is one of those, which would be to transfer additional balance from the Cable Fund to support communications operations. We're recommending $22,000 there. We're also recommending a reduction to our-
Question? I'm sorry. Councilmember Hunt.
Thank you. What's the 22, where does the 22 number come from?
So we asked departments to come back with additional reduction proposals, and this was the amount that was given to the Communications Department to meet those reduction targets.
So, okay, I think maybe we can revisit this one later, but thanks.
The Human Resources Department were recommending reducing their training budget to $20,000. And, I'm sorry, by $20,000, sorry, by $20,000. And this would require more trainings to be done in-house rather than engaging consultant resources for those activities.
Council Deputy President Batiste.
Thank you. I was just curious whether the Human Resources Department holds the training in-house for the whole group, or is this a specific HR training that would be, or is it citywide? And is there something tied to it, this particular training would be eliminated, for example?
Stephanie Johnson, Human Resources. Hi, Stephanie Johnson, Human Resources. The HR department does house the citywide training budget overall. So there's a handful of different trainings that we offer citywide that are centralized in HR. This is certainly not all of the dollars, but some reduction that we can take next year. We're looking at ways that we can partner with WCIA and other offerings to bring some things to us at lower cost or no cost for 2020.
The next item would be to allocate more court costs to the School Safety Zone Fund. So the School Safety Zone Fund allows revenues to be brought, that are brought in through the traffic enforcement cameras to be used for transportation capital investments and also for the cost to administer the program. So the cost of the cameras and then costs to the court for processing the tickets issued by the cameras. And as we looked at the number of citations being issued, we're seeing growth in that workload on the court. So we're shifting additional costs, court costs, onto the School Safety Zone revenue The next item is another court item, and we talked earlier about merchant fees and shifting those onto the customers. There is one area that we are able to implement more quickly than a citywide program, and that is a system that the court uses called N-Court that, right now, is charging people that are paying in person. This would extend it to people doing, I'm sorry, that are paying online or by phone. They're getting the merchant fees. This would also apply to those people paying in person, and we expect that to offset our costs by about $5,000. We are also recommending transferring additional balance from the E-911 escrow account of about $100,000. This would offset our costs for police dispatch services.
So, so tell me about that. The E-911 escrow account is held for us by the county, right?
We get revenue from it based on the number of E-911 calls that we get, and they're held in an escrow account. And we've got a balance of, I believe it's $400-some-odd-thousand, $491,000 at the beginning of 2019. We are recommending, already in the 2019 proposed budget, transfer some of those funds. This would be an additional transfer of funds, and it would leave a balance of about $180,000 in the escrow account for other purposes. And we're recommending leaving that, that funding alone because we are anticipating some equipment needs down the road that we could draw upon those dollars for.
Thank you.
The next item is recognizing additional revenue from swimming lessons. The recent registrations for swimming lessons have demonstrated that there is more demand than there is actual lessons, and we've seen waiting lists in, for our recent registrations. So this proposal would increase the number of swimming lesson offerings and would allow us to bring in a net revenue increase of $52,000. The next two items are some technical changes that we identified in responding to some council questions about the coverage ratio of our DSD permitting fees relative to costs. And in the process of researching that for the council, we did identify a problem with the 2019 budget, the way the 2019 budget was adopted that then carried forward into the 2020 proposed budget, which is the city is charging a 5% surcharge on all permit fees to offset technology costs, for example, our Trackett system. And that revenue is being recognized in the IT fund, and it is intended to offset city IT costs. The problem is when the cost allocation model for IT was developed for 2019, the cost allocation model didn't take that into account and was enacted, basically, a General Fund transfer for those amounts. So basically, the IT fund was receiving double the amount of money than was needed. So the first item here corrects the 2019 problem and would reduce the transfer from the General Fund to the IT fund by the amount of revenue we expect to collect in 2019. And then the second item is then the correction moving forward. That's the ongoing correction, which would be to correct it for 2020 and beyond. And so together, between the two of those, it generates $350,000 in savings to the General Fund.
Councilmember Winterstein.
Thank you. Earlier, when we were looking at departments, you might remember, we went back and forth a little bit. I was trying to understand these one-time costs, and eventually we hit upon, okay, these represent a change to the baseline. It was kind of if the budget for 2019 was considered a baseline, and these were changes. Is that what that 200 really is? It's like, okay, it's a fix to that baseline that you brought forward in the year before? Say for a department?
I would say the, yeah, if we caught it earlier, it would have been-
Your microphone wasn't on.
If we had caught it earlier, it would have been.
Well, so I'm just trying to understand, because we've been using that already to describe some of the budget items. So this is like, okay, it was in the baseline for that department, you know, here's it, and now we're correcting that baseline.
Yeah. Well, and the baseline moving forward is the 150 correction. Because 2019 is already underway, pulling that, what's happened already for 2019 is correcting for that mistake, and that's why that component of it is one-time.
Councilmember Walsh.
So the, it sounds like the 200,000 is almost like a correction for 2019?
Correct.
Which is why you would consider it a one-time?
Correct.
Okay.
And then the 150, because permit activity is higher in 2019 than what we're anticipating moving forward on an ongoing basis. So the 150 is what we're anticipating the ongoing impact to be.
Okay. Thank you.
So then the next item is another technical item. We identified, as we were reviewing the FTEs, that there was an FTE in Support Services that the salary was still in the budget system too high, so we have lowered that by $22,000. We talked at the last meeting, maybe the meeting before that, too, about some one-time savings we're receiving from EFER for some of our equipment costs, and had reported back that we had already captured that savings. And we had, for the most part, captured most of it, $271,000, but the number that we received from EFER was a little bit higher than that, so we're capturing the balance of that towards balancing. So that's what that $77,000 represents. And then the last thing that we're recommending to bring the budget back into balance is applying a 1% underspend on personnel costs across the General Fund. Over the course of doing business, there is natural turnover in positions, and there is typically a gap between when a position opens up and when a position is filled. And we will be capturing what we think is a reasonable target from that savings and apply that to budget balancing. We've talked throughout this budget process about how we're really fine-tuning the expenditures that we are providing to departments and doing a much better job of aligning those expenditures to needs. And that's great, and that helps give the city more flexibility and is, to quote something I said a couple meetings ago, truth in budgeting. But what it also means is that departments are going to have less flexibility. So if, as unexpected things come up, you might see more frequent budget amendments because there's going to be less flexibility to absorb things within budgets. But that gives, that gives the council also an additional pulse on what is going on with the city activities and budgets. So together, all of these things-
I'm sorry, Councilmember Hunt.
Quick question on that one. Do we have any information about what historically the underspend has been in the last, maybe a year or two years?
I can tell you overall, last year, we spent 96% to 97% of the total General Fund budget.
Okay.
So this would be very much in line with that. And maybe I should also add that this is a technique that is used frequently by governments as a budget balancing technique, so that something like this is not an uncommon strategy for governments to use.
Okay. And if it, and if we did go to 2%, would it just be linear, so it would be 261/2?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
And we chose one purposefully. Again, I think the range I have seen in budgets is one to three. We wanted to try this out and be a little bit conservative so that we could report back to you. We've talked a lot internally over the last several days about a Goldilocks kind of presentation. We don't want things that are, sound too good or sound too bad. We want things to be as realistic as possible, and I think this last item really falls into that category, where we feel very confident with the 1%. Anything beyond that, I think there's just not enough good data to support, so that's why we picked the 1%.
Council Deputy President Batiste.
Just to, just to clarify with the 1%, is that something that you would just look at over time and see how everything ended up, based on positions that would be filled? Or would there be something that would be asked of departments to wait a certain period of time before recruiting and/or before filling?
At 1%, this is naturally occurring.
Just naturally? Okay.
And, you know, this could be from turnover in positions, but it also frankly could be through non-position savings, but we're just, we're pegging it to the positions, and we expect departments to underspend by at least 1%. So the total of this package is $956,000, which brings the budget back into balance and generates a net positive of just under $13,000. And with that, I'll stop talking.
So are there any further, just general information questions about the material that was just presented? Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you. I just wanted to mention that one of the, one of the things that was mentioned in the memo that we received that's in the packet is that, that there was, where is it in here? Anyway, there's a mention that the council has signaled, understanding that the council signaled a desire to preserve services and to avoid layoffs. So I guess that, I'm not aware of any conversations that we've had in our budget sessions about, I don't think we've talked about layoffs at all. We haven't talked about whether they could occur. We haven't talked about whether we wanted to avoid them. And so I'm not sure where that came from. I think it's certainly true that, I'm guessing if we went around the table, it would be true that certainly nobody would want that. So I want that made very clear. But I want it, I want it made really clear for all of the important people who are sitting in the room, which are people who mostly work for the city vis a qua, that we haven't talked about that. And I want people who are watching to know that we haven't talked about that. So we have signaled no intention to be interested in it, and no intention to avoid it, and no intention to not talk about it. I just wanted that to be very clear because I wasn't, correct me if I'm wrong, I missed one of the, I missed the very first budget meeting, but I'm not aware of any discussions about that. Again, we haven't talked about it, so I don't know that it's, that's necessarily accurate.
Thank you. Councilmember Walsh.
On the ITS engineer hire that is now being recommended, or the traffic signal, is it possible, considering that's still a work in progress, to budget that or really any position as a partial year, not starting until a later point?
As member Walsh, member of the council, I'll ask Kurt to come up, our Transportation Manager. If I may, Council President, maybe just give a little bit of background-
Please.
-in the work, really kind of I've done over the last week, trying to sort through another matter that's before the council, and that is the replacement of some traffic cameras. I wanted to get a better sense of how those cameras do or do not have an impact on what we're doing currently and how we could do it in the future. And so in talking to Kurt, who is the engineering manager responsible for traffic operations, we have folks in Public Works operations that are responsible for the maintenance of the traffic signals and the equipment, but it's Public Works Engineering that actually manages through the process is where I heard the story behind this position. And this position has been on the books for some time. It's been vacant for, what, the better part of a year?
More.
More than a year. When an incumbent left, there's been unsuccessful recruitments for it. But the position is to take the ITS system that we have and manage it. And so right now, we have traffic signals that are not being managed on a day-to-day regular basis. We have supplemented the work with the vacancy using some contractors. We have supplemented it using other employees. But there's a need today to manage that system. And so in learning more about the cameras, I learned about this position, and I think, and Kurt, correct me if I'm wrong, the reason this is on the cut list is because it has been a longtime vacant position. And I think when staff is asked to look at changes sometimes to budgets, it's easier to put forward a vacant position, especially one that's been vacant for some time versus not. And so my sense, hearing the story, is that Issa Bond needs this position. We need to make sure the investment we've made already in our ITS traffic signals are properly managed and supervised, which is still kind of a separate question from the cameras. The cameras are part of the process that is used, but we have had, as technician in talking to Kurt, most of our neighboring communities have multiples of this position managing their traffic signals. And so when I heard we had the position vacant, I thought it was important to move forward. So we would, with the council's approval that this position would remain with the adoption of the revised budget, we would move forward to fill the position as soon as possible. One of the challenges we've had is it's a very competitive marketplace for this position, and we've had two separate candidates. I don't know, did they both accept and then turn down the position?
They were really close twice, at least twice.
With two individuals working for other jurisdictions in the region. With two individuals working for other jurisdictions in the region, and then they ultimately withdrew because they weren't going to make enough money. So I think one of the things we need to do, and this is going back to the Council President Martz's discussion, which has kind of been in my head throughout all of this, and that is what is Issaquah doing to move all this forward? It's one thing to maintain the system. It's another thing to have the skills and abilities to move forward on this system. So I think if we are able to rework the position a little bit, so it's merely not the mech and the pure engineering piece of managing the equipment, but also looking forward to the next generation, the next generation is advanced traffic signalization. Is that what the A stands for?
Yes. Adaptive.
Adaptive. So that's when they start thinking for you, and we don't have that yet as part of our system, but other communities are moving to that. Kurt has told me tales of Bellevue and how much of their system is already transferred to this adaptive transportation system. So my sense from the council is that's a direction you would ultimately like to go when we don't have money figured out, we don't have processes, but rather than not tend to our ITS system, let's tend to it quickly as we can, manage it properly, and then hopefully have staff that can help us move to that next level.
Does that answer your question?
No, it does not. The question was, can we, based on budget, choose to call a position starting at a later point, even if we decide
Yes.
that that's not in our best interest for this specific position?
You can -- you could choose to fund a position for less than 12 months.
Thank you.
My apologies if I gave you more than you wanted here.
Councilmember Hunt.
I think that on this particular position, it is challenging because we are going to have a discussion about what technology we can have, what our options are for that technology, and I don't know, to me, it seems out of order to say that for sure we need to have this position be filled before we have the discussion about what technology we want to have. So I'm concerned about adding this in there.
That's more of an opinion pro or con really than a question, right?
Well, it's more about the, I guess it's more about the timing of that conversation and if we could not fund this position pending that discussion.
So that would be a fine candidate for a subtraction when we get to the additions and subtractions section.
And, Council President, if I can only add, the position that's currently budgeted is a position I believe we need to properly operate the signals we have today.
So I'm sure this will come up again. Other questions on the material presented thus far? No. Okay. So what I would like to do with this, oh, I'm sorry, Council Deputy President Batiste, your light was not on.
Sorry, I do, I have a question. I'd like to go back to the E-911 information, and I've read through what we have. I'm still just having a concern around this, and I was wondering maybe if Chief could come up and speak to this, because as we're talking about E-911, we're talking about basically money that we have set aside for salaries, equipment. It has to do with the dispatch center and just have a concern with the reduction and would like to just hear more about this.
Sure. Chief Sciverm, sorry about the table there. A little bit further about the E-91 escrow overview. Yes, it is funding that is received through King County for taxes related to phones, wireless, voice-over internet protocol, wireless services. Each jurisdiction that has a 911 center or a PSAP receives a portion of that funding and it's distributed through, based off of 911 calls, what Director Goldberg had talked about earlier. We do have a balance in there as of basically October 1st of about $491,000. There is, that funds our 911 GIS position that is within the IT department. That is a grant that is within, that helps fund that position. That's encompassed in that escrow fund, in addition to the allotment based off of the 911 calls that we receive each year. So it is supposed to be used for kind of necessary or operational items like salaries, training, certain equipment, software for the 911 center. So we've maintained it over the years with a balance of offsetting sometimes salaries, sometimes some of our equipment replacement, or we also want to have some for emergency replacement. So we have a few items that are kind of sitting out there down the road that we are going to have to replace. We're looking, of course, for our servers, for our systems, the battery backup systems as well, our 911 recording system that we're probably going to be looking at towards the end of 2024 replacement as well, that all contribute to this. So we are bringing it down to, if we move forward with this proposal, to about a higher $80,000 to carry over into 2021, which should help cover some of those costs for some of the replacement projects and/or any unforeseen emergency replacement.
So does it seem with going forward with this proposal as written is, I guess I'm just wondering if there's a concern in terms of needing to use some of that for salaries, for other equipment, and just having what we need in place in the event of unforeseen events?
Yes, I mean, the intent of this is to help cover that equipment replacement. Ultimately, we do kind of have a longer-term replacement plan for some of these items, but we do want to have that reserve fund in there, and this proposal would be sufficient for us to manage those projects.
Okay, thank you. I do have one more question unrelated. Beth, I was just wondering if, Director Goldberg, if you knew, when we talk about the 1% COLA and we say typically the COLAs have been in the 2% to 2.5%, is there a number of years that that has happened? Do we have some information on the background for the last five years, for example, or the last three years?
Hi, Stephanie, again. We do have that data. We don't have it tonight, but we can certainly prepare it for you, a history of the COLAs over the years. Certainly for, you know, represented folks, that's driven by what's been negotiated in their bargaining unit. For the non-reps, we've typically followed along the general group such as ASA in determining what that percentage is, also looking at jurisdictions in the area, and then using the June-to-June CPI U index as well as a guide. That came in this year at 2.3.
So in the past, you've been using that information to help guide what non-represented employees would have or average for their COLA every year?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
But we do have that history if you're interested in it.
Okay, thank you.
And, Council President, if I can just ask Stephanie, the last miscellaneous employee contract, what was the call that was included in that? Do you know that off the top of your head?
That was 2%.
Each year?
Yes, for the last three.
So for the last three years, our general employees have gotten 2% each of those three years?
Thank you.
Okay, so if there are no more informational questions about this revised draft that's been prepared for this evening, what I'd like to do is I would like to take the temperature, if you will, of my fellow council members as to where we're at, and I specifically want to get a sense of, do you want to proceed with the original budget proposal or with the revision that's been presented this evening or with something else? And so I'd like to go around the room, if we can, to make sure that we have consensus on what our baseline is going to be for further questions, additions, and subtractions. And to celebrate the return of her voice, I would like to start with Councilmember Goodman.
I appreciate the opportunity to start. So just want to clarify on your question. So you want to know if we want to start with this sort of spreadsheet or which one?
This as a baseline, as a starting point for further additions and subtractions, or the original budget or something else?
I guess this one makes the most sense to me because it at least reflects what the issues that the council raised.
And if you have any other aperture of where we're at before we get into, really, anything else before we get into additions and subtractions?
On any of those up there?
No, just on the process of where we're at.
No, I don't have any other.
Councilmember Winterstein.
Continue as opposed.
Okay. Councilmember Hunt.
I agree. I'd like to continue with the one that is, oh, I don't, do you mean propose this one or?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So I would also like to continue with the proposed one that was proposed in the memo, so the most recent proposed one and the one that we've been discussing this evening. And my general observation is it seems like we, in this budget, we go from the 6% to 4% utility fee without any substantial effect on the services the city is providing.
Thank you. Councilmember Walsh.
So I agree, we should start with today's proposal. My kind of overarching concern with this idea is I add up things that are one-time versus ongoing changes, is that most of the additional expenses, 636,000 of them, are ongoing, whereas most of the savings, 649,000, are one-time reductions or transfers and things, and I don't think that puts us in a solid footing.
Thank you very much for that observation. Councilmember Ray.
I think this is a great place to start our discussion.
All right. I'll go last. Council Deputy President Batiste.
I think it shows the evolution of what we've talked about so far, so I would like to start with this spreadsheet.
Thank you. I would also like to start with the revised proposal that we have for the spreadsheet in front of us. I think it's a very good faith effort to respond to what we heard last week and quite a bit of work to get back to us in just a couple of business days. So I suspect there were some long weekend hours on this. So thank you very much, Director Goldberg. So with that, I would like to open it up to proposed questions, proposed additions, proposed subtractions. And I think what we should do is, as people, we should, you know, alternate, and as people make proposed additions and subtractions, I think we should thumb up or thumb down and move on to the next item. And I see Councilmember Winterstein has his.
More of a comment. This organization was kind of foreign to me. I generally think in terms of the general fund as we look at money that flows in and we should be looking at increasing the inflow or decreasing the inflow. And then we look at money that flows out, our expenditures. So are we going to decrease the amount that flows out and lower our expenditures or increase the amount that flows out? Those are increases in expenditures. And I took all of these numbers and have validated them and passed it over for review from the administration except in one minor correction. And also, I don't, I still don't think the change in the assessment of city services, that's not really a change from the proposal. It's still money flowing out of the general fund. And what I don't, what I'm unable to do is reconcile that number you have down at the bottom, is the 1225, because by all measures, by adding these numbers up in my own spreadsheet here, basically I show a decrease in revenue inflow by 433,000 and change and a decrease in expenditures. There's some increases, but there's also decreases, many of which are just corrections or, but a total decrease in expenditures of 273,000 for a net change of $160,000 less in ending fund balance change. So it's a reduction in both inflow and outflow, but the difference is 160,000, so I don't know where you, I don't know where you get 12,000.
So you're suggesting there's a math error?
Yeah, I don't, I don't, so that was my one issue with this spreadsheet because it doesn't allow us to see, as far as I can tell accurately, really what, if we were to vote something up or down or change something that's currently a zero, make it a number or there's a number in there and say, no, we don't want that. I want to be able to see a running tally of what we're doing, and I don't, I don't see, these numbers don't reconcile.
Well, if there wasn't a math error, then I would say you take 12,825 and then whatever changes we may, change that number to the higher or lower. I don't know what to do with the proposed math error except to say, to suggest that we proceed as we're going and ask the administration to review the numbers afterwards and see if it's possible that there's a math error. I don't really have a good suggestion otherwise what to do with that feedback. If Director Goldberg or a city administrator have a suggestion, I would be all ears. Councilmember Ray.
Can we just take a five-minute recess and have the administration take those five minutes and validate the formulas in the spreadsheet so it's not, we can just take that off the table if there's an issue?
I actually think that would be a great idea. So let's see if in five minutes we could get clarification as to whether it's possible that there's a math error or not. And Councilmember Winterstein, if you could chat with Director Goldberg and see if maybe you could show her your numbers. Let's take five minutes and we'll be back in five. Thank you.
Just, and I did provide the spreadsheet over the weekend. Just, and I did provide the spreadsheet over the weekend.
And we are back. So, Director Goldberg, did you have a chance to double-check the spreadsheet?
Yes.
And your assessment?
The formulas are entered in the way the formulas should be entered.
Okay. Thank you for double-checking. We will proceed going forward with potential additions and subtractions to the budget. Oh, Councilmember Walsh?
I am concerned with the idea of transferring money in from other funds, particularly the elimination of the, or I'm looking to eliminate the E911 transfer and the cable fund transfer, because I would prefer to keep, I would prefer not to muddy the waters of keeping us in a good position for ongoing, not just a single year. So as an alternative proposal, that would be 122,000. I believe if we increased the utility tax to 4.5%, it would be somewhere around 180,000. And I don't know if you have the numbers.
That sounds roughly about right.
So you have a combined suggestion, which is to?
I'm willing to look at both of them, but I was just trying to put it on the table as an option.
Sure. I appreciate you providing a holistic proposal. People do not have to do that, but it is nice that you are leading us off with an effort like that. So I just want to make sure I understand. You would remove the $22,000 administrative recommended option regarding cable fund. You would remove the $100,000 administrative recommendation regarding E911, and you would change the utility tax from 4.0% to 4.5%? That is what you're proposing?
Correct.
Thoughts on that proposal? Councilmember Hunt, is your microphone on, because you have a thought on that proposal?
Well, I, so first, our procedure question. So are we going to have a proposal, and then we all discuss, and then we go to the next proposal, and I'll discuss, or are we going to make a list?
No. We have a proposal, and we talk about it, and then we thumbs up or thumbs down that proposal.
Okay, so we're not making a list and then go through each one? We're going to thumbs up and thumbs down each one?
No. We already have, I mean, this revised proposal has basically all the things that we had come up with as a list previously.
Okay, so we're, so I do have thoughts on that one.
Okay.
So the thought, it seems to be that we are not setting ourselves up for long-term success by taking these transfers from these other programs. I don't disagree with that sentiment. However, I think that generally this budget is, in a lot of ways, not making structural changes, and there's a lot of places where we are going to likely have to make different decisions next year. So as I've said previously, I think my hope is that the citywide services assessment makes us better prepared to have those conversations. For this year, I have no issue with these particular transfers. The one that was identified from E911, it sounds like that was identified as a reasonable transfer in. And then additionally, I think that the cable one is very reasonable, given what I can see from the cable TV fund. It is used for communications. If we can transfer into the general fund to offset some of the communication costs, that seems appropriate. And I would also like to look at that cable TV, how we're spending those funds more holistically in the future as part of the city services assessment. We have information from the National Community Survey that only, I think, a few percent of people, about 6% of people, use the cable TV as a major source of information. So I have no issue with these particular transfers. I agree with the sentiment overall that this isn't setting us up for the long term, but we're going to have to make hard decisions, and I hope we'll be better prepared with the citywide services assessment.
I should have allowed you to speak to your proposal before I took other folks' comments. Do you wish to speak to it before I take other?
Sure. The only, the main concern I have with the E911 is the additional information that was in our memo about 2021 and the hiring, or the need that we're going to have to cover the cost of that hiring. I don't, for that reason, seeing future costs there, I am more concerned with the idea of taking from one area to give to another area that's more broader use, so.
Councilmember Goodman? Or Council?
If, so I wasn't going to speak to this particular one, so if Councilmember Ray was, then he should go first.
Oh, I was?
Yes.
Thank you. So I'm not in support of raising utility tax above the 4%. That was, I think that was a good cap for new taxation there, and it helps us to ease in increases possibly over time. I share, everyone's concerned that you don't want to be using fund balances to fund one-time or ongoing expenditures. But I think that if we look at the possibility of smoothing over time and increasing of some of these taxes to become more in line with some of our neighboring cities over time, then this becomes not so much an ongoing expenditure as it does become a one-time to help us get through this period of smoothing.
Thank you.
I just have a, I don't want to make any comments. Can I just hear your, what your line items were again? I'm sorry. Just, and then I'll comment later.
I can, I.
Please, please.
So it's removing, so basically, starting with what's in front of us as the baseline, it's removing the $22,000 item regarding cable fund, administrative recommendation, and it's removing the $100,000 line item regarding E911. And it is changing the utility tax from 4.0% to 4.5%.
All right, thank you.
Council Deputy President Batiste?
So I, I was looking at the same concerns. That was part of the reason that I wanted to hear from the chief this evening and to talk a little bit about, especially about the E911. I'm feeling more comfortable now. I think that, I think that as we go forward, I'd like to see us stay within that 4%. I'm comfortable with both, both the cable and the E911 at this point. I think that with everything that we have coming work-plan-wise in 2020, we'll definitely have some opportunities to reevaluate things, or you will all have an opportunity to reevaluate some things before the next budget session, so I would not be in support.
Thank you. So I'm not in support of this because I am, I don't, not only do I not want to increase the utility tax, I want to lower the utility tax. I want to lower it somewhere between 3 and 0%. So that's heading in the wrong direction for me. I also feel that this budget does not, I think that, I hear the issue around there's too many one-time revenue options, but, you know, I've already said that I think for this year, as we look to make systemic changes next year, I'm okay with using a little bit more ending fund balance to reduce the shock, the fee and tax shock, particularly taxes that are regressive. And so right now, we're looking at a one-half, 1% reduction in ending fund balance. And so I would rather, if I was going to see changes out of this, I would rather see it come from the ending fund balance rather than increasing the utility tax, which I already don't like. So that's why I'm not in favor of this particular proposal. So if there are not, are there any further, oh, Paul, Councilmember Winterstein?
Yeah, thank you. In general, I, at the beginning of this meeting, I asked for clarification as far as this sheet in front of us goes to the bottom line, and this is just about the bottom line of the general fund. And, and it, the point of that question was, as was pointed out, is that one of the ways this fixes, addresses the general fund is just to go get money from somewhere else. So it is really not, it doesn't really feel like a decrease, a decrease to me. They feel like, well, we can, there's just some other qualified money, we'll go get that from, to cover it, and it becomes more of an accounting thing whether or not we're really making cuts or not. And so in general, I wasn't, I'm not a fan of that, because, again, because of where we are, we should be looking to make, I think, proportionate cuts, not just getting money from other places. So with that, that idea of not doing those shifts from one fund as transfer into the general fund as revenue, that concept, I'm okay with. But like you told, I'm more interested in reducing the revenue from utility taxes. I think you said somewhere between 0 and 3%. I prefer it to be 0.
All right. Councilmember Hunt?
For later discussion, I am also interested in the 3% in reducing the utility rate.
Are there any other comments on the, oh, Councilmember Ray?
This is really not a comment, this is a question. What is 1% of utility tax workout to, just for our kind of planning purposes?
Director Goldberg? Your mic is not on.
My mic is not on, and you're making me do math while I'm sitting here, while listening to you all talk. Give me a moment, please.
Yeah, I just think as we have this discussion, if we kind of know what we're talking about in rough numbers for 1%, 2%, 3%.
Knowing what we're talking about is always a good idea.
Yes, I'm with you on that one.
It's about $362,000 per.
I'm going to say 360.
Okay, fine, 360.
1% is approximately $360,000 ultimately. Thank you, Director Goldberg. So are there any other comments on the proposal that is in front of us, or are there any thumbs up, thumbs down? All right. One, two, three. So I see one yes and six nos. Other proposal, Councilmember Goodman?
I was only going to suggest if there's a way to go down the list orderly.
We can do that if we think that there's lots and lots of, I wasn't sure that there would be lots and lots of proposed changes to the budget. So if there were, people only had three or four proposed changes in mind, I wasn't going to, I've been, I'm happy, I'm happy to go line by line if that's the way we like to do.
Well, I'm thinking that for a couple of reasons. One, it's so we're not jumping around. And two, it's to, it's to send, do thumbs up, thumbs down on most things on here, just so the administration gets a clear sort of signaling from us. That's just the way, that's just the way I thought about it.
Okay. I had thought we had thumbed up the, pending any further changes, we had given a thumbs up to the raft of this by saying we wanted to move forward with this baseline.
I think so, and I think, I mean, I get where you're coming from. I think the, to start with this as a worksheet, I didn't take that to mean that necessarily everybody was okay with everything. That's, that's just me.
All right. We can go line by line. So let's start at the.
Question and clarification question, please?
Councilmember Winterstein.
Thank you. Councilmember Goldman, oh, I'm sorry. The total revenue from utility taxes in the original budget is 1.8 million? Yeah, that's, so that's from the original.
1.856, I believe.
1.82220.
Pretty darn close, yeah.
And, and a reduction from 6% to 4%, if that were to take that amount, so that's the reduced amount, that's the, that's a, yeah, that's a reduction amount.
Correct. Would it be helpful if we put the slide up that showed the differences?
Okay.
Would that be helpful?
Yes, please. We'll just, well, actually, we don't want to.
Do you want me to reorient you to this?
Leave it up because we want to go back to.
I'll put it back when you need it.
There we go. So let's return to the council balancing tally. I think the revised property tax, that isn't any, that isn't a council decision, that's just, that's just late-breaking information. However, the less existing utility tax on the water rate, which is based on council direction on 1022, to keep the water rate increase at 3.5%. Let's do this. If people want to discuss an item, we can discuss it, and if people don't want to discuss an item, don't put your mic on, and we'll move on to the next item. Okay. So next, we have utility tax reduced from 6% to 4%. I'm guessing that we'll have some discussion on that one. All right. Councilmember Hunt?
I'm actually, I needed a clarification on the revised property tax. Is this reflecting the banked capacity or not, and did council make a decision on that? Because it seems we had some different opinions on that.
This assumes the banked capacity is still moving forward. I think my recollection from the earlier discussion was that a majority wanted to not put that back on the table for these discussions.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't realize that that included that conversation already being addressed, and I want to address that one. So let's go back up and talk about that one. I will go back. Thank you, Councilmember Hunt.
Sure.
So do you, Councilmember Hunt, do you want to discuss that one then, or?
I wanted to clarify because I thought that we weren't unanimous, so I thought we might want to thumbs up, thumbs down on the banked capacity.
Yep, I appreciate that. So I have said that as a council member who voted no on a number of those in the early years, I think council gave thought and careful consideration on that, and I think it's weird to go retroactively undo those. As much as I like progressive taxation, as much as I think the current state system As much as I like progressive taxation, as much as I think the current state system is the most regressive west of the Mississippi River, which is staggering, I also don't, I don't like undoing previous councils' decisions. So, I'm not in favor of the banked capacity. So, I would propose removing the banked capacity element of this line item. I don't know how much money that is, but.
165,622.
I'm going to let Director Goldberg.
My recollection was 138. Let us verify that and get back to you.
Okay.
We'll have the number in a minute.
Okay. They'll have that number in a minute. Let's, let's come back to this one and let them answer that. So, let's return to the six, let's do the 6 percent and 4 percent, and we will come back to that previous item. So, 6 percent, 4 percent. Oh, no, we're ready.
138.
138. So, if we remove the banked capacity, it would remove $138,000 from the ending fund balance. Councilmember Winterstein.
Just a general comment. Yes, we did do some kind of in-out, we did some votes. What I witnessed over the years is that as we gain more information and hear perspectives from others, sometimes a council member, when they get a holistic view of everything, you know, may, may change a vote that they did earlier, like what might have been considered preliminary, to help craft a new proposal. And I think we need to kind of allow, and I think this banked capacity one is just that. I think that was like a preliminary vote, and there may be others that I think we should be open to others being able to bring back, because this, now we're getting closer to the final.
Other comments, Councilmember Ray.
Are we talking about banked capacity still?
Yes. I have a proposal in front to remove $138,000 from the ending fund balance, represented by the banked capacity.
I have the opposite view. I don't think it's retroactive, and I don't think it's us taking back anything or making people pay, pay back anything. Retroactive would have meant for the last five years, we would go back and we'd claw back all that money. I think what this is doing is recognizing that we have been fiscally very fortunate over the last five years, and we're able to do the banked capacity, and that moving forward, our situation has changed, our income mix has changed, and we need access to the funds that we are entitled to by law.
Thank you, Councilmember Hunt.
I, I did want to discuss this because I know that there are different perspectives on this on council. For me, I think that council can't bind the hands of future councils, we can't bind the hands of future councils either. I think that it is one of the relatively less regressive ways that we can collect tax, and I think that it is necessary for us to continue providing services, and it's also a longer-term, forward-looking way to adjust. And so, I think for those reasons, I am in support of the banked capacity.
Councilmember Goodman.
I agree with Councilmember Ray and Councilmember Hunt so far, and I just want to add that we have, I believe, two comments from, or have had either one or two, I found one, I can't find the other one right now, emails from the public who did not oppose this. So, all those things together, I would be supportive of, I would, I'm supportive of using the banked capacity.
Thank you, Councilmember Winterstein. I think you were before, Councilmember Walsh.
Okay, thank you. Interesting play on words there. The only reason this number is as low as it is is because we have been inadvertently clawing it back years over years, as we got this very transparent report within, recently, about how there were certain refunds that weren't accounted for, and we were actually able to collect more property tax than actually council had intended. And otherwise, this would be many hundreds of thousands of dollars more, and then going back and collecting that actually would be a clawback. But we've been kind of taking it back as it is, and so, for a couple of reasons. First of all, you know, for reasons we don't have to go into, we were making mistakes in the past, we were collecting more than we should have. And so, I think that just, it's, it's, a fair thing to do is to really, is almost to make up for that, is to say, well, listen, we're just going to not touch that. That's one aspect of it. The other one is to, yeah, in my mind, when I, when I supported for a number of years the 0 percent, in other words, don't increase, don't take the up to 1 percent, it was, I, my mind as a policymaker, I was foregoing that. We were foregoing that, that we're not, we're not building our base for future years. And so, this would be going back, to say yes to this, absolutely would be going back what, on decisions I made earlier. So, for that, for those two reasons, I, I would prefer that we do not use the banked capacity, that we remove that from the revenue.
Thank you, Councilmember Walsh.
I support using the banked capacity because you didn't charge it in the past years, so you're not being retroactive. You're just looking at your frank situation of revenues and expenditures for this year and years going forward, and recognizing that service needs, need a solid source of property tax, and I think this is a good source.
Council Deputy President Batiste.
I would support using the banked capacity, just seeing it in the way that that is something that, that we had set aside, and a less regressive way to, to look at that and something that is available as we go forward.
Councilmember Winterstein, did you have a further? No. Okay. So, seeing no further comments, so a thumbs up means reducing the ending fund balance by $138,000 by removing the banked capacity. Thumbs down means leaving the $138,000 in and using the number that's here. Does anybody have any questions about what a thumbs up or thumbs down means on this vote? Okay. One, two, three. Two oyes and five noes, the modification fails. So, 6 percent, 4 percent utility tax. No one? Councilmember Hunt.
I would like to propose that we have a budget for, proposed, or prepared for reflecting a 3 percent utility tax. There's a line in the memo that we received about expecting that council will go to 6 percent utility tax next year, and I, I don't know if we will do that in the next year, but using the analogy that Council President Martz used last year of course correcting, looking ahead in traffic, looking a few cars ahead and making a more, a more, less radical course correction, I would like to see the 3 percent this year and then 3 percent next year, if that's what council next year decides to do. I think that's half this year and half that year, so I think that makes more sense in terms of doing things gradually. And I also think that with this 4 percent cut, it doesn't seem to reflect a change in services, and so, I'm very much interested to see what a 3 percent budget would look like, and if it's possible to also not have a reduction in services. I think that's something we should know, and I think we should also know, I think it would be very important to know if we do reduce the utility tax to 3 percent, what the administration's recommendation would be if they do recommend cutting services at that, at the 3 percent, so then we can weigh the, the current budget services versus the 3 percent services, and we can actually make a decision on that. So, I would like to recommend that we see a 3 percent budget.
So, what I'm hearing is, the proposal is to increase the reduction from $711,000 by going from 6 percent to 3 percent, increasing the reduction from 711 by something like $363,000 to $1,073,000 or thereabouts, whatever it is, approximately that much, approximately an extra $360,000 to bring us to a 3 percent, so 3 percent utility tax. Is that correct?
That's correct.
That's what's in front of us. Other comments, Councilmember Walsh.
So, I'm going to play the new card again. I'm going to keep doing this as long as I can.
December.
No. I was appointed in February. You got to give me a few more months. So, what, what are we asking, and what's the next step? Because I would be concerned with this concept of saying, yes, let's go down to a 3 percent, and the default being take that out of the general fund versus, and I appreciate you saying, hey, let's look at what other cuts. So, what does that look like?
What that looks like is it would take us from plus $12,825 to minus $350,000 or thereabouts.
So, I have to thumbs up or thumbs down this idea based on just the sole idea that it would come out of the general fund bucket?
Well, what will happen is we'll have, we'll go through this line by line, and as the night continues, we'll see what that net number is, and then at the end of the evening, we would have, maybe there's a net surplus, maybe there's a net negative, and we would have to talk about, do we want to make any further additional cuts or subtractions? But yes, in the absence of further information at the end of the evening, if we are in the, if we are in the negative, then that would come out of ending fund balance, absent any further, absent any final modifications to the budget.
Okay.
Councilmember Ray.
I'm concerned about this a lot, because we have, in this budget, very little wiggle room, and $360,000 will have a significant impact. I don't think that we have a zero service impact in this budget, and the reason I say that is when you look at the plug at the bottom, the 1 percent salary savings, that really is, we don't know where it is, money, we're going to find it, money. And all of a sudden, we're going to go from 1 percent to about 2 and 1/2 percent, I don't know where it is, I'm going to go find it, money. And so, that really is a bit of a cross-the-cut, across-the-board cut, we're seeing right there with the 1 percent that's there, and I think that's really eminently doable. If I'm looking for another source of funding, and I don't see anything up there that really excites me to start cutting for $360,000, then I'm talking about 2 and 1/2, 3 percent across-the-board cuts, and that's, that's fairly substantial. So, I'm not, I'm not supportive of, as much as I'd love to, and I'd love to ease this in a little bit, I just don't think I can get there.
All right. I don't want to always get the last word on these things before we do the thumbs up or thumbs down, so I'll give, I'll give my opinion now. I'm in favor of this. I've already said I'm going to take more out of ending fund balance, so this is exactly the kind of thing that I've been saying for the last two meetings I would support. Other, Councilmember Goodman.
I don't, I don't oppose the idea at this point. I guess one of the reasons is because when we first were, the first time the budget was proposed and in subsequent meetings, it's, you know, really, really tight budget, you know, and, and don't know that we can do anything more, and we seem to have done more. So, I'm also a little bit interested in what else we could do, what else we could find, and I'm not, I don't know. And I agree with you, however, Tola, that we can keep going and see what happens with the rest of these line items, because if you're just looking at an extra $360,000 right now, that's daunting, but we don't know how everything else is going to turn out.
Other thoughts on this proposal? Council Deputy President Batiste.
So, I'm, I would love to find a way to, to get on board with 3 percent. I would love to find a way to bring, bring this down, and Councilmember Hunt's proposal to do 3 percent and 3 percent seems to make a lot of sense in terms of where we're going, heading forward, and I don't know if 3 percent is what's going to happen in a, in a future year. But I think there, we've already taken a couple of really significant deep dives into the budget to find what we could find, and $360,000, an additional $360,000 has me concerned. I will say that maybe, maybe moving this by 5 percent and, or a half a percent and only, only having to find like $180,000 might be something that I might be able, be able to wrap my brain around, but right now, I'm, I'm just concerned about what the additional $360,000 means, and I don't have a really clear idea in terms of what we have available in general fund. That's my other.
Councilmember Winterstein.
So, now you know why I've tried to put it in a way that I could always see the holistic effect of any given proposal. I will mention, so what I can see in front of me in my spreadsheet, if, if indeed the reduction in revenue was up to $1,073,270, I think that's from your, the table you had up there earlier, there are two expenditure increases on the table in this document, and one of them is the traffic signal engineer for $184,000, and another $185,000 one is the restore, the reduced deferred street maintenance repairs, so that's taking money out of the general fund. So, those two right there are $369,000. So, one way to offset this reduction in revenue is to reduce expenditures that are also in this proposal, and that's one way to do it.
Thank you. Other feedback? Councilmember Hunt.
My other feedback is that when we went from the 6 percent utility to the 4 percent, I think we had a number of new pieces of information, including that we could make, that we could have additional revenue by reducing the waitlist for swimming, so we had never heard about that before, and a number of other items that were very new to council. So, one of my reasons why I'm interested in asking for the 3 percent additionally is that I would like to know if there are other things so that we can then consider them. But I do think there are a number of decisions we can also make based on the information we have now, as far as if we would like to proceed with this, which I would, to proceed with the 3 percent, then I think there are other things we could look at in the budget as it stands also.
Councilmember Winterstein again.
I'm sorry, I just didn't tell.
Other thoughts on this proposal? So, a thumbs up is for a reduction of an additional approximately $362,000 to bring the utility tax rate instead of from 6 percent to 4 percent, rather, 6 percent to 3 percent. That's what a thumbs up means, and a thumbs down means to stay with the administration's recommendation of 4 percent. So, with that, oh, Councilmember Goodman.
So, I liked that suggestion, I think somebody else made it before I talked about it, that maybe on the table at the end to see where we end up with.
So, you're suggesting to defer this? You were the one who wanted to go line by line, right?
Yeah. So, I think what that means is that we, that we wouldn't vote on this necessarily right now. I mean, we, I mean, there's different ways to do it. I guess I was just thinking that we would wait till the end, because I think maybe we might feel differently at the end about it, but I guess it doesn't matter.
So, what I'm going to suggest is people could also, if this were to, if, if somebody wanted to do that, they could vote no right now, and then they could revisit this at the end of the evening as well. Other comments or questions? Councilmember Winterstein.
So, just for clarification, you want the question to be to reduce from 4 to 3 percent? That's the only question we're considering?
Yes, and it would have a net impact of reducing the ending fund balance by approximately $362,000.
And for clarity, what did you just, what did you just outline as an opportunity to revisit?
What I was saying is if people are not comfortable making this decision right now, they could vote no to the proposed motion, and when we get to the end, we're going to go through this line by line, but at the end, there's nothing to stop anybody from revisiting any item that we talked about earlier this evening, and so, someone could vote no right now and revisit this issue when they got to the end of the evening.
It's the biggest number up there, we have to juggle. It's the biggest number up there we have to juggle. So it's kind of like, I don't agree with the process. I think we should defer this vote.
All right. So with that, are there any other comments right now? So again, a vote yes is to reduce from 4% to 3% with an additional impact of $362,000. A vote for no is to stay at 4% now with the certain option, I mean, with the option later to revisit it if one would -- if body were to revisit it. So with that, Councilmember Ray.
So if I vote yes, can I reconsider it too?
Sure.
Okay, so either or, right?
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
Good clarification. Thank you. With that, 1, 2, 3. So we have 3 yeses and 4 nos. The motion fails. And so now we -- do we wish to look at the expanded low-income utility discount program? I don't see it. Shift --
Sorry.
Oh, Councilmember Hunt?
Contemplating the last one. So I, just for a heads up, I think I would like to revisit the utility tax and look at it. My current thought is a 3.5, and I'll wait until the end because it seems like people were wanting to think more, but that's later. So on the discount utility tax program, I think that it shows core planning on our part that we're going to be phasing this in a quarter later than the utility taxes are increased. So we're going to increase the utility taxes. People won't have the low-income discount program until the first quarter and then potentially it'll take a while for the people to figure out how to access that program as it seems happens. And so I would really like to know if we can do something to mitigate that planning issue. A couple -- and I don't think it's -- it might impact the budget, which is why I'm raising this. So I had a couple ideas. One that I don't think necessarily will impact the budget would be if it could be applied retroactively, if we know that. The other thing would be if we can defer the utility tax until the first quarter or if we can have the discount program sooner. But my goal is if we could have something so that we can better align this low-income utility discount program for people that need it for when we increase the utility tax, because right now there's this offset.
City Administrator Bob Quitz.
The answer to the question is yes. That we -- Council President and I talked about another matter similarly situated earlier today. What we can do is we can come back to either the evening that the budget is scheduled to be adopted with the best program we can put together at least for 2020 that would deal with a variety -- with the utility tax, with the cemetery fees, and anything else we can wrap. I think what we're trying to do is look at a more holistic approach. If we can't get there, then we'll take pieces, and we would bring to you the pieces with the commitment to move forward with a more holistic approach. I'm looking at the calendar. So we're looking for adoption, Beth, on the 18th of November. So if we were to bring back an agenda bill with a plan for 2020 that would include senior utility, cemetery, package up what we're currently doing with other things, the change, if you move forward with the change with the senior gold pass, have a strategy, a plan that would start 1-1.
Great.
Thank you. Council Deputy President Batiste?
I just wanted to say I wholeheartedly agree. Took the words right out of my mouth and well said. And I, especially with the utility tax, if we're going forward to implement this, and the piece about having that be retroactive, I think is incredibly important.
And we would want it to be ready to go 1-1 because I think that the retroactivity gets really, really icky. And we hear you, and this administration agrees with you. We will make it a priority to come up with a holistic program. If we can't have a plan in place that you can adopt in November for starting 1-1.
Thank you. So with that, and thank you actually very much, that preempts the question I have further down the list.
Didn't mean to steal thunder, but figured.
No, quite all right. So I don't want to do the 250K one right now because that's really, as has been suggested, that is the net impact to ending fund balance, isn't it? So although it's also -- well, it's also really a question about doing the citywide services assessment, or is it not? Director, help me out.
So my understanding of the discussion from the last meeting was that there was general agreement that we proceed with the study.
That's right.
This was intended to just shift the funding to fund balance. So that, I believe, is the question before you all this evening.
So really, as Councilmember Winterstein suggested earlier this evening, this is really the ending fund balance that balances out the budget. So I'd like to take this one off unless anybody has an objection to it because really, we're going to get to the end of this. Right now, it's sitting at 250. We're going to see what it is at the end. We're going to look at a couple of big -- we're going to look at potentially at least one big-ticket item. So we could change this number, we could raise it or lower it, but this is going to be impacted by all the other items that we have yet to see on this list. That, anybody have -- I see some furrowed brows. Councilmember Hunt?
Okay. Well, my understanding was that this was the best guess for how much it would take to do a study of the citywide services assessment. So I guess I'm just a little bit -- I wanted to clarify that because it makes -- it's what we estimate it will take to do this study, so it's not that -- I don't -- I didn't get the impression that it could sort of be reduced or...
No, this is a question of fund balance.
Oh, if we wanted to do -- okay.
Do you want to take this from fund balance?
If we wanted to do less from fund balance, okay.
So that it's not...
Not about the total amount?
Correct.
Okay, I -- thank you.
Councilmember Goodman?
Can you refresh my memory as to, it says shift the fund balance. What -- where was it before?
It was funded with ongoing general fund. So this represents just a deduct to fund balance.
Okay, savings account.
Yes.
Thanks.
Councilmember Walsh?
I was just going to say, I think this came because Councilmember Ray and I had both stated that we were comfortable with the idea of that coming out of fund balance. And so if we were looking for a net zero where revenues and expenditures are pretty even, we would be okay with fund balance then taking a little bit of a hit for that item. I don't know how that works out with the calculations then.
The question would be, do you have a proposed modification to the budget in regards to this line item?
No.
Okay.
As long as it makes sense, because it almost seems the way that's represented on the spreadsheet is almost like it's revenue?
In essence, you would be drawing fund balance as the revenue source to pay for this, so...
Versus ongoing revenue, which was how it was previously budgeted.
So, I mean, I think the question before you with this proposal is, are you comfortable using $250,000 worth of fund balance to cover the cost of, the one-time cost of this study?
Councilmember Ray?
I think this is the first of, because it came up in our last meeting, of areas where there may be the use of fund balance. This is going to President Martz's comment. So this is a different kind of critter. So I think it's probably appropriate to push this off because I think at the end of the day, we may have other things where we say we want to fund this or that out of general fund balance. Correct?
Okay. So you are not making a motion?
No, I'm agreeing with you that we should just push this off to the end of the discussion.
All right. Seeing no other comments, I'm now going to ask if anyone wishes to make a change to basically not shifting street operating REIT, which is what this item basically says. Councilmember Hunt?
I don't think I support this. I'm interested to hear what other people think. But REIT has a more limited scope of what it can be applied to, and this is one of the things that it can be applied to versus general fund. REIT is more restricted in what it can be applied to. It is more volatile, but I still think that this is an appropriate use of that REIT funds. And I don't know why we would go -- at this time, I'm unclear on why we would go, why we would shift it, given our general fund situation. So I think I am, at this time, not supportive, but interested to hear what other people think.
So no specific proposal, but wanting to hear from other councilmembers?
Oh, sorry. So I'll propose that we do not make this shift.
So what...
So shift back to using REIT?
Shift back to using REIT. So I don't understand the financial implications of what you're proposing.
Okay.
I think for clarity, I had proposed that we do this shift, and the proposal on the screen is, don't do it.
Right. Right.
So are you agreeing with that or disagreeing with that?
Right, this is in there just as a...
In particular...
Here's something we didn't -- here's something we're not recommending.
The administration was not recommending.
Sorry, we, yes, we, you. Something the administration was not recommending.
And in particular, the background on this was that we're already, in this budget, transferring $2.37 million from general fund into the street operating fund. And my proposal was to reduce that shift by $800,000 and instead shift it, transfer it from REIT, $800,000 from REIT into the street operating fund to keep the street operating fund at the same level as the budget proposes, except funded more, that much out of REIT instead of general fund. So that would be a reduction in expenditure of $800,000.
Do you wish to make that proposal at this time?
Well, that's what that thing is right there. And so, yeah, I'm still in favor of that, but it shows zero, so I would...
You want to change that?
Yeah, I propose, and, you know, I put that number out there because it was part of a formula, an overall package that I talked about the other night, about how to not take the new revenues and various reductions in the COLA, in the assessment, and then this switch for REIT, and then spend $1 million out of ending fund balance, and we would be balanced. So that was an overall package that I put forward. And so I think this does, you know, we've got some numbers to move around. And yes, we were given a report from staff, I appreciate that. We hear about kind of the volatility, we got the detail here. But, and I don't sure if this would be, if, what, if this would be REIT 1 or REIT 2. And this report that we were provided does show the total spend, but I don't know the change. I think the balance is still the same. So I still, the total balance of all of REIT was 3.8 at the end of this budget. And, but I don't know what the balance is in REIT 1 or REIT 2.
That's part of the issue is that we don't know what those balances are attributed to REIT 1 or REIT 2. That's part of, you may recall, me talking earlier this year about needing to reconcile some of our funds and our fund balances to identify colors of money. REIT is one of those funds that we can't clearly say of that balance, how much is REIT 1 versus how much is REIT 2.
So we're planning a $2 million drawdown on REIT 1, and who knows, there might not even be $2 million in REIT 1.
No, that's not what I'm saying. I'm not saying that we don't know the balance. What I'm saying is we don't know how much of that emanated from unspent REIT 1 in the past versus how much of it was unspent REIT 2 in the past. So we can't say of that 3.8 balance that you're referring to, how much of that came from REIT 1 versus how much came from REIT 2.
So your proposal, your proposal is to reduce the transfer to REIT by...
No, reduce the transfer to street operating fund.
Sorry?
And replace it by a transfer from REIT.
Okay.
So that is a reduction in expenditure out of the general fund.
Right, which results in a net increase to the general fund.
It's a reduction in expense.
Yes. Okay. But the net effect, it's a positive, it would be a positive number here.
I guess. I'm just talking about a decrease in expenses.
But I just want to understand your proposal.
Yeah, yeah, you got it.
To end the amount being?
My original proposal was $800,000. And I would love to, you know, kind of have, hear more of the sentiment, because that's a radical proposal, I realize. That was a radical proposal that allowed us to not increase any of the utility taxes or take the bank property taxes as well. But it is, though, valid in that it is valid across the board, but it does reduce the spend out of the general fund. And except now, we just don't know, we've been told, we don't really know how much balance is, you know, do we have $800,000 out of rather REIT 1 or REIT 2 left that we could spend? So I still think that's valid. So I'm going to stick with my $800,000 original and see what everybody has to say.
All right. Councilmember Walsh?
So for reference, the REIT fund information is page 104 in our budget. So to clarify some of those numbers that I'm seeing, REIT fund expenditures in the 2020 proposed budget are 1.1 million to street operating, 236,000 to capital facilities, 1.128 million to street capital, 1.115 million to information technology, for a total of 3.579. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, where are you, you're on...
Page 104 of our budget shows the REIT fund. And so I'm looking at the 2020...
Yes, sorry, yes, sorry, yes.
Okay, and so that 2020 proposed budget is spending almost $600,000 less than 2019.
Correct.
And is that because there is less revenue coming into that fund?
Correct.
Do we know what the current fund balance overall is?
Yeah, that's the 3.8 million dollar figure that Councilmember Winterstein was referring to, I believe in his earlier comments.
I mean, I'm of the opinion that if we're potentially going into a downturn in the economy and potentially looking at that revenue going down to 1.5 million, I don't want to take more out of REIT just to fund our everyday expenses. I would be more interested in exploring cuts or revenue that are true net nets rather than, I mean, to me, this is a transfer from a volatile fund into a big bucket that allows us to spend on things. And I just don't think that's the appropriate way to manage our money.
If I could just clarify, that's not the proposal.
Okay, I will give you another chance to speak to, but Council Deputy President, did you have your mic on? No? Councilmember Ray?
So I'm kind of aligned with Councilmember Walsh here that we, the word that I keep going to is it's the street operating fund we're talking about here. So this is ongoing. So next year, we would either face the same problem or we would dip into REIT again next year and then the year after. Is that a fair thing? Because that dollars will have to come from someplace in out years, too. So one of the, one of my touchstones has been to try and minimize the utilization of fund balance for ongoing expenditures because though it is expedient, it also moves that can down the road for the next city council to wrestle with. So I'd rather, whenever possible, limit our use of fund balances to things that are not going to be recurring costs that we will then have to wrestle, same question, next year. And I also am concerned about the fact that REIT is volatile, and if we could go, and God forbid, down to a, you know, a 2008 level of $1.5 million, we would tear through our fund balance and add nothing flat. So... So, not supportive.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman.
I agree with the comments so far, and for something, I'm, in my mind, this is a recommendation that also involves some professional expertise on Director Goldberg's part, and I would rely on that, on that expertise and her opinion at this time.
Council Deputy President Bateese.
So this was one of the, we had proposed, gotten some information and, and answer from the administration. I think that, I really appreciate Councilmember Winterstein's proposal in trying to find that, that, that chunk of money. But I have to agree with some of the comments of my fellow councilmembers. We've already got, looks like a third of the total REIT revenue already set aside in 2020 in addition to additional projects. And I think that that, and especially as we're talking about REIT 1 and REIT 2, it, it just doesn't sound like the right way to go at this point.
Councilmember Winterstein.
Were you going to make any comments?
No.
Okay. Couple of points of clarification. First, you can find on page 17 of the original budget document where we have the full, all the funds, and there you can see the estimated beginning balance for 2020, and then the inflows and the outflows, and the estimated ending balance. So that's where you get the 3.8 million dollars. Point, a couple, so, and a correction is that, is that, first, first of all, there's one fund that we have a financial policy for that, that we will not use fund balance for reoccurring, and that's the general fund. That's the only financial policy addressing any fund in terms of use of balance. REIT is, and, and the street operation fund is not necessarily ongoing, it's for a set of projects, it's a set of things to complete related to streets. So it's very much, and it's always our choice, even this year, we choose to overspend our inflows by almost $80,000. So there's not really a policy question in terms of the use of ending fund balance there. And again, this is, what this is a proposal to do is to reduce the spend out of the general fund. It's reducing the spend of the general fund, but still making the street operating budget whole by getting the money from REIT. So that's a clarification to a comment earlier about how we're using the general fund money. This is a reduction in general fund. I think that, those clarifications are very important.
So I will come out on this. I'm going to support it. I think throughout the years when we have found ourselves with surplus in various other funds, we've used it for various purposes. I totally get the concern about using one-time funds. I think there's a fundamental concern about, are we on a sustainable long-term budget or are we using, are we applying some Band-Aids? Yes, we are applying some Band-Aids. But I'm okay with, again, because of the shock of not wanting to go to a 6% utility tax, I'm okay with a Band-Aid in this particular application, we've done it before. As Councilmember Winterstein says, there's no, there's no policy reason why we can't. We, we've, we've always juggled around large amounts of money out of our funds, it happens almost every year. Councilmember Ray, you look quizzical.
I'm, I'm just wanting to clarify, what's the dollar amount we were talking about?
Council Deputy President Bateese.
So in terms of the, the policy question, this is just, this is not something, I guess I have a question for Councilmember Winterstein. So this is something that you're proposing for now and not ongoing. I mean, we can't really do that in terms of the budget, but it's, okay. And then in terms of the 800,000, are we, are we in alignment that because of what we talked about with REIT 1 and REIT 2, that we, that we have that amount?
I, I can't say how much of that 3.8 million dollars is REIT 1 versus REIT 2. It, it's REIT money, I just can't tell you how, where, which of the two it emanated from.
Councilmember Goodman.
Well, depending on how this, maybe I should make a comment after we do something.
Do you?
I was going to say that I, we have some continued work to do on finance issues, and a lot of work to do next year on other things, and so I'm not going to support this, but if we find that there is some project that we want to get done, or there's something important that we're not able to do because of the decisions we made tonight, if this should fail, then I would be interested in the administration coming back and making a proposal that utilizes the funds that Councilmember Winterstein is talking about.
Councilmember Ray.
I'm, I'm, I'm a little bit baffled by, by this, and I, and it's probably just me, but when I look at page 106 of the budget, which is the street operating fund, what are we talking about here? What, I mean, where does this $800,000 plug into this model?
Some of the source of transfer into street operating comes from general fund, instead of general fund, come from REIT.
Okay, so if I went through, well, I look at the revenue, so the transfer from general fund here, street operating fund is 372.
That's the increase versus?
Got it, thank you.
So the net for the year, with the base from last year, with that increase, the net transfer is 2.37 million.
And so what was the base from last year? Where can I find that magic number?
2 million.
So the base from last year was 2 million?
2 million, so we've increased.
Transfer from general fund.
Correct.
And so what we're saying is, we're going to transfer in?
2.37.
Okay. And the proposal on the table is to transfer in 2.3 minus?
1.5.
1.5 plus another additional 800,000 from REIT, so 900 from REIT. There's a, additional 900 from REIT.
Additional 8.
No, there's already 100 in there.
Yeah, well, oh, relative to 2019, correct, correct.
Yes. And what was the REIT transfer in, in, in total for 2020's budget?
To street operating?
Is that the 1.1 million?
1.1.
Well, maybe it does. Okay, I'm, I see it, I got it. I do in the math. I'm balancing, thank you.
Councilmember Winterstein.
Oh, sorry, I really.
Other questions? So the proposal in front of us. Councilmember Winterstein, do you want to state the proposal in front of us, or me?
Reduce the transfer from general fund to the street operating fund by $800,000. Replace that money in the street operating fund by getting, transferring it from the REIT fund.
Thank you. That is the proposal in front of us. If you vote yes, you support that proposal. If no, you are saying that you want to stick with the proposal that we have on the board, which is to not do that. So, 1, 2, 3. 2 in favor, 5 against, the change fails. So spoiler alert, we are not going to be done by 9:30, I'm fairly confident in saying. What I do intend to do is at 9:30, take the temperature of the council. If somehow we are a few items away from being done, then maybe we will continue on. And if, as I suspect, we're nowhere near done, then I'm going to recommend that we consider adjourning for the evening at 9:30. So just to let you know, that's 40 minutes away. All right, with that, we will move on to Consolidated City Hall. Anybody want to debate getting rid of that and putting 50K back into general fund? Nope, okay. Restore community fund, taking out $69,775. Anyone want to consider making a change to that one? Councilmember Hunt.
I'd like to consider making a change to also restore the 10% cut to the services that were for our service contracts with different agencies.
Do we know how much money that would be? Director Goldberg, I really appreciate, we're like, this is like when you play racquetball with somebody, and you're just firing serves at them all day long, and they're, and they're doing an amazing job returning those serves. We'll give her a moment to check that out.
Can we do those separately?
20.
They're two separate thoughts. I'd like, I'd like to.
I, I think actually it is just a proposal.
Oh, so not, no, no change to community fund?
I'm not hearing any change to the community fund piece. I think this is really a, a separate item that is just, I, I mean, is that fair?
Yes, it's, it's related in my mind, but it's a separate item.
Yeah, and you're not proposing a change to this?
No, I'm not.
27,000.
$27,000. Do you wish to speak to your proposed addition?
I think that it is an amount of money that will make a big difference to these organizations, which I think is similar to the rationale for why we're wanting to restore the community funds. And additionally, I think that we're doing the citywide services assessment again to get a sense of how we can best provide services to the community, and I think that we shouldn't make changes to our services contracts with organizations until we've taken that holistic look. So I'd like to not cut that 10% on those contracts, and then we can revisit that in the future, but similar to our rationale for why we're not cutting the community fund, I would like to not cut those service contracts.
Comments on this proposal? Councilmember Goodman.
I agree, and I don't think I could say it any better.
Council Deputy President Bateese.
Ditto. I agree.
I will also agree. Councilmember Winterstein.
I need a little bit of help. Where is this in the budget?
It's in, it's in multiple locations, so the contracts are, reside in different budgets, I believe, some are in the executive department, some are in the Office of Sustainability.
So is it summarized anywhere?
We can get you a, we, we've provided it in previous communications, I think some of the responses to the earlier questions, but we can send that out again.
Okay, and so this, so the, actually, I don't know if I've seen the details, so in 2019, we did contracts for service with how many entities? And this, and our proposal is to, the administration's original proposal was to renew those contracts, but for lesser amounts in the net total of 27,000?
So there were contracts with nine organizations in 2019, and would have contracts with seven of the nine in 2020, although some of those are at lower amounts than were offered last year.
I think he found it on page 65 of the budget, and this is where I had seen it earlier, the number is 4,000, not 27,000.
That's because that's only one part of.
Office of Sustainability.
Yeah, that's, yes, there are contracts elsewhere. So there's, most of them are sitting in the non-departmental budget within the executive office.
Okay, thank you.
I can list the organizations if it's.
I, I do have to say, I'm starting to be a little bit concerned that we're trying to build the airplane while we're flying the airplane, because we are likely, I mean, let's just say, we're, there's going to be another budget meeting, right? We're not going to be done in 32 minutes. So what I would like to suggest is that we allow the administration to come back on this one more definitively, if that's okay with you. Because I'm, I'm not, I'm not confident with everybody looking around, and councilmembers looking at one page, and, and Director Goldberg looking at another one, because she hasn't had a chance to review this, I would prefer to defer this to the next meeting, if that's okay with you.
That's okay, I thought it would be faster.
I mean, I'm not, I'm not hearing we're 100% confident that we've got.
I'm confident in the number.
All right, well, we'll, I mean, we'll yea or nay on that number, and if it's a different number, then we'll have to cross that bridge when we get to it.
27,000.
27,000. Okay, Councilmember Walsh.
Sorry to question the number, but on page 34 of the budget, there's a reduction to contracts for services and operational support for nonprofit organizations in the executive department, that's 55,904.
We'll have to look at that.
All right, so let's defer that one until, thank you, Councilmember Walsh.
It's in multiple places, and moving forward, it should be in one place.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that when we address this question, that we understand the impact for it. So we'll, we'll, we'll address it at the next budget deliberation meeting. So, moving on, we are on to Gold Pass, I believe, unless, Councilmember Winterstein, do you have a question? So I believe that that has been City Administrator Bob Kutz, as said, that's going to be part of the comprehensive, the low-income response that we're going to have regarding the utility discount program and the cemetery fee, and this item, I believe you, you also added that into that?
Only to the extent that the council, I think, has been frustrated that we're not doing a good enough job making all of these various discounts available. So for budgetary purposes, this is what we're proposing, and whatever you land on, we will commit to get a better word out about all of these, including.
I see, okay, that's part of that side of it. Okay, is there anyone wishing to make any changes to this proposed item? Councilmember Walsh.
So I hadn't thought through the idea of the merchant fees, and if people are paying this $5 monthly, it seems like a large portion of that would be, would be merchant fees. And so my concern is that concept and that coming into the revenue. So I guess my proposal would be, if somebody pays annually, no merchant fees, and if somebody pays monthly, I don't know. I don't have the information there to say yea or nay on that, but it concerns me.
City Administrator Bob Kutz, you look like you have some thoughts.
I was just confirming that we don't collect the currently, monthly is not currently an option. So I think, is that correct, Jeff? So, so what we could do is we could go back to just, you pay $1 amount for the year, and that dollar amount can be whatever dollar amount.
Okay, so you're representing the $5 per month as a calculation that somebody could do in their head, but they would still have to pay the $60 as a one-time annual?
Jeff had said earlier that we could make the option available if it provided flexibility for people to pay for it monthly, but that would be something new. And so I think what will, probably just easier to go back to a, the original thought, which is, this will be an annual amount. We think $60 makes sense, if you feel it does not, that's fine. The amount of money is, is small in the context of the entire city budget, so.
Yes, I guess I would propose, if we do do it monthly, that we have to at least consider what that cost is. So I'm comfortable with it as an annual.
So I think right now, we're saying there's a clarification that.
If we change to monthly, but I don't think there's any change to the budget based on my conversation.
So I read that as the proposal is to have a $5 a month. So if you want to do something different, propose, if you want to do it as an annual, propose doing as an annual. But that's, that's, that clearly says they will do it as a monthly fee.
Let, let him finish. We, we would collect it monthly, we thought that would be a positive thing. I think the council's discussion this evening, talking about the merchant fees, indicates that perhaps, maybe it isn't as good as we thought it was.
Well, let's, let's find out whether, what the council.
We do not feel strongly, whatever the council feels is the community standard, we're there.
Awesome. All right, so are you going to? All right, so are you going to, right now, the proposal is to do $5 a month for residents and $6 a month for non-residents, do you wish to propose a different mechanism?
I don't know, this is such a small piece, but in my mind generally, we should not be paying merchant fees for people, just to give them the benefit of paying monthly rather than annually, so I will take it off for this, but I think it's a larger conversation for us to have.
Councilmember Ray?
So, I think that a larger conversation is around merchant fees across the city, regardless of its parks, or its DSD, or its water, and that's one we have to tackle next year because of changes in what's happening with water. My understanding on round merchant fees is it's a percentage of the transaction, so it doesn't matter if I do 12, $5, or 160, it's the same percentage of merchant fees, so the merchant fee is going to be fixed either, either way. I like the idea, actually, of giving people, particularly people who are in fixed or lower incomes, the ability to pay month to month, because it's a little bit easier if you're looking for dollars to find $5 than it is to, $5 every month than it is to find $60 once a year, so I think that would be a great service, both to our residents at $60, and I'm supportive of the $6 non-resident fee at 72.
Gotcha, so no change from the stated policy on this spreadsheet?
Check.
Councilmember Goodman?
I just want to make sure I understand, so we do have the ability of charge monthly or not?
Hi, Jeff Watling, Parks Director. We currently do not, we have the ability with the Perfect Mind software system to transition to that, it is totally your pleasure, council, we have heard from customers, there is an interest from some to be able to pay monthly. Your merchant fee question is a really good one, I'm sorry, I don't have the exact answer for that, we would need to get back with you on what that would look like for that monthly difference, we would also have customers that would likely pay credit card if they paid an annual, so there'd be a merchant fee attached to that as well.
Thank you, I'm supportive of, for, in addition to the reasons that were said, supportive of a monthly, not everybody's here for an entire year, so I think providing some flexibility is good.
All right, so I do not hear a proposal on the table. Council Deputy President Batiste?
Just, just adding on that I agree with what we have, and I would like to see the monthly come forward as an option in the future, I think that's really important to our residents and non-residents.
All right, I think we're all in agreement on that. All right, moving forward, we're now on to, we've, sort of, I think that also carries through on the shift merchant fees to customers, so Councilmember Winterstein?
I think you skipped over Restore Community Center and Pool, that was line 18 in the spreadsheet in front of us?
I'm sorry, I thought we already covered that, my apologies. Would you like to propose a change to that?
Yes, but one of the things that we didn't get, this was just a net, when we, just for 2019, so this opening of these additional hours, I think the proposal from the administration is the new days and hours that were added in 2019, roll that back to 2018, so, so we only had these additional hours, and there was a, part of that original proposal last year, was we knew that we'd cost something, we knew that we would get some revenue for usage, for fees like that, so I never really saw, what we didn't get is really what was, how good our forecast was or not, but I'm taking this then, this number right here to say, you know, we're actually losing $25,000 a year on that, so, so that's what I'm trying to understand.
Jeff Watling again, adds new meaning to unbend a knee. So, the, what you see here is restoring the hours, the Sunday operating hours, the caveat I would add to this is we had proposed a modified operation in, in 2020, in that we would, what we've seen, let me, let me start over again, what we've seen as we've opened on Sundays, is we've seen rental revenues increase, drop-ins haven't been all that much, so what we proposed in 2020 is we're going to close for drop-ins, meaning we won't staff the front desk, but we're still going to be open for those rentals, what we heard is a desire from council to say, let's, let's continue to have that facility, those facilities be open not only for rentals, but for drop-in as well, and so what you're seeing by this $25,000 being restored is, that's, in essence, front, front desk staffing of the facility for those Sundays.
I really do appreciate that, so I, what I heard you say, in that in 2019 so far, this additional day that we added in Sunday, drop-ins are very low, and, 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 and so I, my proposal is to take this off, this is an increased expense, my proposal is to take this off and go back to the original proposal where the only use is, as was just described, and, and part of that justification was, we just did it for one year, and this is exactly the kind of thing you do when you're in a tough budget situation, you find an expense that really wasn't that, or especially something new that you recently did, and it wasn't behaving the way you thought it would, so this is a, it was a reasonable reduction to take off, so my proposal is to take that $25,000 off.
And, and return to the, or stay with the current practice of not having, not being open on Sundays? Gotcha. Except for rental services. Councilmember Hunt?
I think it, it wouldn't go, it wouldn't continue our current practice, our current practice is we are open on Sundays, it would restore, it would go back to our 2018 practices, so-
I'm sorry, I misspoke.
So, I, I just wanted to clarify too, because I would like to continue, I would like to not, I am not in support of the change, and I would like to continue with the current hours, which does include Sunday, we did have a budget question about this, the response was that up to, so 25 to 50 people use the community center on Sundays, and another 25 to 50 use the pool, for a total of 50 to 100 users for both facilities, so I think, you know, up to 100 people are using the facilities, I think that it's, I think it's, I think it's also not in keeping with what we're trying to do here, which is maintain services while we then do a bigger holistic look at how we should restructure services, so I, I am not supportive of cutting this at this time, and I would, I won't be supporting the change.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilmember Walsh?
I do support the change because I, even though we are doing, or we are looking at doing a citywide services assessment next year, does not mean that we put the brakes on any cuts when we have the data at hand, and I think the data at hand, as recommended by the Parks Department and the administration, was that this is a low-usage area, and for our taxpayers to spend $25,000 for a relatively small number of people to use, I think the data supports eliminating this.
Other comments? Councilmember Ray?
I'm sorry, Jeff, this is a question for you, so if we don't restore these hours, the community center would be closed for everybody on Sundays, is that the proposal, and the pool would be closed on Sunday, is that-
It would be closed for drop-in use, so it would still be open, let's say, a, a group or an association wanted to rent lap lanes at the pool, we would be open for that.
But if I just wanted to go and run laps around the gym, I would have to be doing that on Saturdays.
Correct.
Council Deputy President Batiste?
So I would, this, this has been our first year to, to have everything open on Sunday, and I know that we're hearing that the drop-in rate is lower, I guess I'm wondering, back to you, Jeff, I guess I'm wondering about, I mean, this is like a, a pilot year to me, that this was the first year to do this, and so giving it the opportunity, opportunity to pick up speed with other people, I, I know that, I definitely have read and heard from some community members about this being incredibly important to them, so I'm just wondering what your background is in terms of this was the first year, and then oftentimes in future years, things can change.
Sure, so you're asking me to gaze into my Parks crystal ball?
Yes.
Parks and Recreation crystal ball?
Exactly what I'm asking.
Yeah, I, I think it was certainly our desire and interest in a, in a slightly different budget time to open the facility on Sundays, and so, like any new service or program, especially something that isn't necessarily solely marketed, it's just really about access and availability, yeah, that, that may expand over time in, in future years. I don't have data on that, right? I, I think as we looked at having to, and working with administration or presenting a balanced budget, yeah, this wasn't an easy decision to say, hey, we just piloted this, and now let's, let's take it away, but again, faced with having to make some hard decisions, this was one that, yeah, was, was proposed, but to say it's been thoroughly tested or tried, and we know for certain what the numbers are just in one year, there'd likely be some degree of increase over time.
Okay, I'm really struggling with having a year where we just had talked about all of this and piloted this, and it's a needed service for so many people, I'm struggling with pulling back in this area.
Councilmember Ray?
So this is one where I'm changing my mind, kind of in real time, in that as we look at our community and we look at health concerns and having a healthy community, and I'm just struck with that the community center provides, and the pool provide access to exercise that people desperately need, and so in addition to maintaining the hours, and I'm hoping we can do this without any budget impact, I think there's an opportunity to better market the services that are available, and so instead of saying we're not going to do it because the drop-in rate is low, let's figure out how we pump up the drop, drop, drop-in rate, not the dropout rate, the drop-in rate, so that we can, you know, get better utilization of the great facilities that we do have.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman?
Yeah, Councilmember Ray said already, stole, I don't know that it's thunder at all, but I was thinking the same thing, I was looking at our healthy community strategy, also thinking that for the folks who don't have, can't use the community center, but yet they're, you know, helping pay the funds that, you know, give us a Parks Department, the only time, they're working during the week and are busy in the evening, and the only time they can go is on the weekends, and it's just Saturday, you know, I know I get upset when I go to use something on a Sunday and it's closed, thinking, so I have one day, back when the days were that I used Saturday to, you know, catch up from the week and clean house and do laundry, and then Sunday, woo-hoo, it's closed, so, and it was just a year, a pilot year, we wouldn't be looking at, I don't think we'd be considering closing it on Sundays after a year if we didn't have the budget issues that we're having, but I just think it's relatively small, I too would like to see it expanded, my, my thought was, I don't remember seeing anything out there or any marketing on it about that it's open on Sunday, I think when we have more time to spend on this, and I say we, because I don't know what everybody's workload is like in the departments, I would like to potentially see us expand the program offerings on Sunday, you know, we don't have the pool that SMAMISH has, but I'll tell you what, that place is jammed on the weekends, and it is a lot of fun, so I'm hoping that we can expand in the future, and I don't want to, this just goes against what I think we should be providing on the weekends.
So I'm going to oppose the, the change, in addition to the reasons already stated, I think pools have a unique, or somewhat unique position, especially for folks who aren't available during the week, or who can't get to it during the week, there's a lot of people that have health conditions for which pool is one of their only options, I'm one of them, for folks who don't know, I have a degenerative muscle condition, and I'm, I've lost almost all the forms of exercise that used to bring me pleasure, but pools are one of the few things that I can still do, and so, and I'm lucky enough to belong to a private pool that I, that I really like, but for, for folks who, for whom the community pool is the number one choice, I, I think there's a particular health advantage to our community to have it open on Sundays. Councilmember Winterstein?
I know we're about to go to the vote, and, and I'll just add that, I know last year when we decided this expansion of open on Sunday for both facilities was based upon a revenue forecast and a trends that actually weren't there, so we thought we had plenty to work with, and in fact, that we didn't, so I think we have to keep that in mind.
Thank you. Any other closing comments on this one? Okay, and a vote yes is a vote to strike this line item, which would return us to not being open at the pool or community center except for special fee-based events. Hey, sorry, a vote for yes on this would be to remove this line item, which would result in no regular hours for the pool or the community center on Sundays, except for special events, a vote for no is to leave that line item in, and to be open to the, for the community center and the pool on Sundays. Okay, one, two, three, so that fails one to six, and we'll move on to the next, oh, two, I'm sorry, that fails two to five, I apologize. So, moving on, do we, do, are there further things we want to discuss around shift merchant fees to customers, or have we talked that one through as part of the past conversation? I see no lights lighting up, cemetery fees, I believe, has already been covered by City Administrator Bobkowitz, restore, reduce deferred street repair and maintenance, $185,000, street fund but offset with general fund dollars, does anyone wish to suggest potential changes to this line item? Councilmember Hunt?
This was actually the one that I was confused about earlier with the street operating to REIT, so I wonder if this would be possible to shift to REIT funding? It's a, it's a considerably smaller amount than what was proposed earlier by Councilmember Winterstein, I wonder if that would be possible, and then if we could discuss that as a change.
Are you looking to me?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's the same issue, just smaller in dollar amount, but same.
But if I can ask a question of the finance director, or as a magnitude, I mean, the numbers we're talking about, the likelihood that there'll be appropriate dollars in the REIT for 185 is more likely than 800.
Yes.
So I, I guess I want to make that point, that we will continue to do our deal, if the council chooses to make the change, we'll flag this, if for some reason we're wildly off, we'll come back and let you know as soon as we can, but likely, this is a reasonable, if you chose, if you so chose, we would feel more confident that, that we'd be able to do it this way.
Okay, so I, I would like to propose a change to fund this, instead of general fund dollars, to fund from REIT, sort of as, as part of the smoothing function that we see ourselves trying to figure out this year, and because I think REIT is, is more limited in scope than what we can do with general funds, and we have a lot of things we want to be doing with general fund this year.
So I believe what you're saying is to move that source of revenue from general fund to REIT, what that would do is that would blank out this item, and it would result in a net increase in the ending fund balance of $185,000, is that correct?
That is correct.
Councilmember Winterstein?
I support the proposal.
Councilmember Walsh?
So, reading from the budget, it says if we make this reduction to repairs and maintenance, there will be reductions to roadway repairs, contractor tree removal, signal detection replacement, and the annual crosswalk maintenance program, and so from my perspective, those are- are essential services that we provide as a municipal government, and should not be in a funding source that is volatile, should be a part of our general operations, and need to be a priority. And in fact, from my perspective, I think all of the funds, all of the money that is coming into the street operating fund from REIT should be replaced with general fund. So this goes in the opposite direction from my perspective.
Got it. Thank you. Other comments. Councilmember Goodman.
I just want somebody to explain this one more time, because I don't really understand it.
Director Goldberg.
Explain what's being proposed. Okay, so I think what is being proposed, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that we had originally, so the proposed budget made a reduction to street maintenance of $185,000. At the last deliberation session, Councilmember Walsh asked that that be added back. So that's what's reflected here. It's added back, being paid for by the general fund. What I believe Councilmember Hunt is now proposing is that we add it back, but rather than using general fund as the funding source, we use REIT as the funding source.
It's in essence, well, similar to a smaller version of what Paul was suggesting, really.
I guess the part that's confusing me is when it's, when you say add it back in, REIT.
It was reduced in the mayor's proposed budget.
And the brackets there say that.
The revised proposed budget, we placed it back in, using general fund dollars.
Right there.
The 185.
Okay.
Do you wish to comment on the proposal? Council Deputy President Batiste.
Question. Was there a reason that when this was added back in, that we went to the general fund and didn't consider REIT?
Similar concerns about using REIT for ongoing costs.
I guess we're, I'm getting a little hung up, is that we wouldn't be tied to doing this in the future. We could do this for this budget year, right now, and we could make a change. The council could make a change to go back to where it was. Okay, I just wanted to make sure I was understanding.
Councilmember Hunt.
I just wanted to add that, in addition to your point that you had made about being able to do this one time, it was actually in the budget for, in the mayor's proposed budget to defer to the next year, to not fund this for $185,000 this year at all. So yes, it will be up in the next budget as well. It's always up in the budget.
Councilmember Ray.
I'm having this, a little bit of a deja vu moment here, and so my comments are going to sound a little deja vu-like. This is an ongoing thing. We can choose this year to use REIT funding. We can use general fund balance if we so chose. The challenge that I'm looking at is if we don't defer this maintenance that was in the mayor's budget, so we decide we're going to fund that, then we're going to be facing the same question next year when we come back to have this discussion, because that will be, it'll still be there. So I'd rather us find a long-term funding strategy for a recurring problem, because street maintenance, as best I can tell, isn't going to go away after this year. So I don't know that REIT is any better of funding than general fund balances.
So would that be, no, you're not supporting the proposed change, or yes, you are supporting the proposed change?
So I think there's two questions here. One is the question of whether or not we restore the maintenance, and the second is what's the funding source for the maintenance? And so, I'm, I don't know how I feel about restoring the maintenance. I'm kind of on the fence on that. And I also don't see that there's any advantage over using REIT over general fund at that point. So, yeah, in net-net, I kind of oppose the what's on the table.
Okay. Before I go to Councilmember Winterstein, I'll say that I am in support of the motion. Councilmember Winterstein?
Just for the record, the proposed spending out of REIT for 2020 includes projects that include the Gilman Boulevard improvements, pavement management program, Gilman Boulevard, it was $128,000, pavement management program, $900,000, and then there are other, the Black Nugget, which is wall replacement for 50, which is infrastructure, bridge inspections, which is 20, bridge loading calculations, which is 30, and general street operating maintenance and repairs, which is $1 million. So there's quite a bit that is infrastructure, and particularly street-related, that we're using REIT funds for.
Thank you. Councilmember Ray.
Oh, sorry.
Yep. I'm going to assume Councilmember Winterstein, your light's on, because, yes, okay. I'm wanting to be thorough. And no other comments? So on this one, if you are voting yes, you are voting to switch the source of revenue for this to REIT, which the net effect on the general fund would be to blank this item and to restore $185,000 into the general fund. If you're voting no, you are for leaving it as is, and having this come from the general fund and leaving this line item as is. So without, everyone understand? Yes? Okay. One, two, three. So we have four in favor, three against. The proposed change is moving forward. With that, it is 9:30. We are in fact not close to being done. The neck, so I'm just looking up in the calendar, our next scheduled budget deliberation is Wednesday, November 6. I would like to get the sense of the body, whether we should adjourn this evening and continue on November 6. I would hope that we would complete our deliberations on the 6th, and that on the 6th, we sort of, I don't want to say bar the doors, because that's illegal, but we just say, you know what, we'll caffeine up and try to get her done however long it takes on the 6th. Is there anyone who has a challenge with that? Councilmember Winterstein?
No, I support that. And just so my colleagues know, I have to go to work at 10 o'clock.
Councilmember Goodman.
I need to go.
How many items are, I don't know, let me see, like, numbers in them?
With numbers?
Never mind. A lot.
Yeah, 20-ish. To me, it's about, it's about half. And we have, in particular, the holdovers from before, or the continuing items that we'll want to address, that are the utility tax and the restore the human services grants, looking at confirming the magnitude of that. Those are the ones that we've gone through, but not really. Councilmember Hunt?
I am fine continuing the deliberations. I did wonder if we might reconsider a 3.5% utility tax, because I think that might set us up for a different conversation if that was the starting point for the next budget discussion, the 3%.
Okay. I'm not sure we want to pick a bogey, because I'm not for 3.5%. I'm for less. So, and I know, I'm not sure we have a consensus on 3.5 in particular. I think we just need to have the utility tax conversation broadly. I don't know if we pick a particular bogey other than.
Oh, okay. So I guess my concern is that I didn't think that we were going to get any information back from the administration regarding how we might get to a lower number under the current budget. Okay.
But we still have lots to go. I mean, so we don't know the net effect on general fund from a bunch of these, right, that are still in front of us.
Okay.
Do you have, I'm sorry, I'm not getting, is there a particular, you want the administration to come back with the impact of a half percent from going from 4 to 3.5?
I would, so as I had said earlier, I guess that when we discussed it the first time, we did discuss that we might come back after going through the list. We didn't quite get through the list. So if we're going to revisit it in the future, then that will also address that concern. I just would like to revisit that.
For sure. Councilmember Walsh.
I don't feel like we're at a halfway point, and I would prefer staying until 10:30 tonight, rather than staying until midnight or 1:00 next week.
Councilmember Ray.
I think a couple things. One is, I'm getting tired, and I make better decisions earlier in the day. Councilmember Winterstein's got some conflicts here in the near horizon. And I think we are more than halfway done, because we're not going to have to have the hour or so preamble that we had this evening. So I think we're at a good place to knock this out in three hours.
Councilmember Goodman. Yep. City Administrator Bobkowitz.
Council President, members of the council, I guess I'm trying to get a little help with my crystal ball, because I want you to be able to be successful at your next meeting in more or less three hours. You've put some money back on the table with your most recent action, with the shift from the REIT, shifting the money using REIT. So that picks up some dollars. I've heard some questions about the COLA, I've heard some questions about the traffic signal engineer, you know, and those are bigger items. You know, if there's general consensus on the IT funds, we haven't really talked about. I'm just trying to find out how much more I need to come up with. The rabbits are done. There's no more rabbits in the hat. There were position eliminations and layoffs that were the next part of the list. And so if I need to come with four or five positions in my hip pocket in order to help you, once you get to the bottom of the list, if it's not balanced, I just need to get a sense. And my sense is, I need to do that in order to have, to give you maximum flexibility so that you can conclude your deliberations. If there's any other guidance that any of you have, or thoughts that you have, I would appreciate it. Otherwise, that's really, I have no other shifts from this fund or that fund.
City Administrator Bobkowitz, I don't believe you need to try to come up with another holistic budget. We're only halfway through this current one. If we get to the end of this current one, and the seven council members, we have, we'll get to a number that has something having to do with ending fund balance. Either we find, we put a bunch of money back in, and there's more in the ending fund balance, there's less, but we'll reach a point next week, on the 6th, where we will be done going through this list, we'll understand what the proposed situation is with ending fund balance, and we'll either say, you know what, we're good with this, or we will ask for revisions. But I don't think the administration should try to make a new bogey halfway through this list. I just, I don't think, there's still a bunch of changes to go, and council needs to think about. It would be great to get a new running total, to understand what the things we've discussed tonight do to ending fund balance. But unless council, anybody, and council feels differently, I would not want you to attempt to reclose the budget right now until we see what the other half of this looks like, and whether council, whatever remains, whether council wants to use ending fund balance, which a number of us are fine using ending fund balance more than the administration wanted. So until council says it needs you guys to do a fresh turn, I don't think you need to do a fresh turn.
And it really wasn't a fresh turn, but just to have more options available. I'm afraid you're going to come to the end, and if there's not consensus on the use of fund balance, then you're out of meetings, and then you need to then decide if, when the budget then gets adopted, because you won't be able to adopt it the following week unless you have another meeting that's not currently on the calendar.
Well, if we get to the point on the 6th where people are not happy with the ending fund balance, and people have to propose changes that get us to the point that they're happy with the ending fund balance.
Very well, thank you.
Does anyone wish to make any closing comments tonight before we adjourn for the evening? Again, I want to say thank you to all the staff that are here this evening that answered questions on the fly, and above all, Director Goldberg, you, I didn't see you sweat once in the midst of many, 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 many questions on the fly. Thank you so much. With that, we are adjourned.